And everyone, welcome to another meeting, special meeting of the East City Council. As we go over our budget and a couple of, actually the one contract that's on the agenda for tonight. And before we get started, let's just have a moment of silence and then we'll go right into our pledge of allegiance. All right, so pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Board of City Clerk, time is now six fifteen P M. Roll call please.
President, Mayor Wimberly.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Howard. Councilman Williams. Councilwoman Washington. Councilwoman Watley, present. Councilman Chisholm.
Here.
And Councilman Shaw.
I'm here.
You have three present. Three absent.
All right, I make four, that's a quorum. We'll write it to approval of the agenda.
So move, Mr. Chair.
There's support?
For it.
Moving and properly supported, any discussion? All right, hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Inades. Let's have a motion carry. All right, jumping right into it. You guys had a chance to review the I A F F tentative agreement. We know we had some outstanding questions, which I believe we did have those answered. I don't know if you guys want you move that to item. Let that stay the item that it is, but we know we definitely need to have some action on it tonight. I don't know if you wanna come back to it or leave it like it is on the agenda. It's your pleasure. Your motion. Item C, your new business discussion approval, I A F F tentative agreement. Everyone received a hard copy of the last time around. And we sent it electronic.
We just wanna have some discussion or no?
We can either, that's what we're talking, that's what we're here right now. This is action, it's an action item. Putting it off. Putting it off. So, is there, is there a motion? Ma'am?
We have the, the fire chief. Get the bullet points again, cuz I know there were several, there were several changes that were made. There were several questions that were asked.
Right.
Thank you.
No, no problem. At the same time, before we, because it is under business and it is action item, do we have a motion?
Okay, I make motion.
Support for discussion.
All right, we're supportive for discussion. All right, Fire Chief Hubbard, please come to the front, please. And as Councilwoman Wiley, you did understand what she's looking for?
No, I don't.
Um, as it relates to just the, the high points, as it relates to the contract, the changes that were made.
Which time? Which time?
Now, where we're at right now.
Where, where we left off the net and the specifics of it, because I believe the treasurer asked a question regarding funds that weren't listed. Within that, remember?
Yeah, that was me that asked that question. The one, the, the one question that we asked, the last question was, um, as it relates to promotions. You know that we had three or four.
That's been included.
Right, so what's the number?
Thirty-two thousand, three hundred dollars and thirty-two cents.
Okay.
And the CFO has put together a breakdown of how these costs come into play. And at the, at the end of the day, what the bottom line will be, which I have right here. And I think you said, he sent that out to everyone back, I don't know, a week. You made this. About a week ago. And on it, basically, at the end of the day, uh, if we were to surpass our overtime allotment that we have allotted after we take out the monies for the auxiliaries, then the hit to the city would be thirty-four thousand dollars. If that were the situation. Right now, we have it at a break even position. Uh, based on the three guys leaving early. Three, three new hires to replace them. Uh, the differences between those salaries is a savings to the city of eighty-eight thousand nine seventy-six. There's one-time savings because they don't get to take out their banks of eighty-two thousand, city. And, um, those are the two savings, correct? What's this? Oh, overtime will go down a hundred and five thousand. And then on the cost side, uh, to increase the multiplier for the three people is fifteen thousand a year total. Uh, the fire marshal hire annual is nineteen thousand. The increase for the entire department for multiplier to two point eight five is forty thousand per year cost. The hiring of the auxiliaries is one twenty-one, six eighty, which is covered by the overtime money. And the cost difference for the promotions that you just asked about is thirty-two thousand, three hundred. So, when you take the difference between those two, comes out to okay, what is that, including that overtime? Thirty-four thousand.
Okay, how soon can we, um, the whole idea is to hire auxiliary, correct?
Right.
How soon do we see this happening? Because you, you stayed before that it was difficult to get people to come. Now, you're going, you're going straight to an academy of some sort?
Yes.
Okay, and these people just have the basic fire?
They are firefighter one and two certified, just like any regular hire would be.
Okay.
The difference is, they don't have, they may not have their E M T license yet.
Now, the E M T license is not conducive to the A L S, right?
That is correct.
You're hired if you, if we have A L S, right?
Correct.
Okay.
You go A L S, you're talking about paramedics.
Okay, alright. So how soon do you anticipate having these people on board?
Well, I, I'll put it like this, if this were approved tonight, and the union approves it, I'm going out the door the next day to get, to try to get my people.
How, how soon do you have a union vote?
I think their next meeting is the second Wednesday of this, of June. Whatever that date is, I'm not sure what that date is. That's their, their union. Now, they may call a special meeting for this, to move it up, to expedite it, but that's up to them. Uh, but typically, it's the second Wednesday of every June, uh, of every month, every month.
Okay, now, uh, once these people are hired, are they immediately ready to, um, begin to alleviate the overtime problem?
No.
Okay.
Uh, there is a transition period, depending on the person, anywhere between two weeks and four weeks, because they have to get acclimated to the department such, system. Uh, they'll be on the trucks, they'll be going to the calls, but we're not gonna put them out there by themselves until we get them acclimated. So that, that, it depends on the person, how fast they learn, two to three weeks maybe, to get them full, so that they count as a body to help their problem, is what you're asking.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so, um, if you went out tomorrow and you found six people you were good with, what would be the earliest that that could happen? And how are you fit, uh, manually for that, you know, that transition period?
I think you, you're asking about the process. So, let's say I went out tomorrow and found six people, and they, they fill out applications and we interviewed them. Okay, so you have to allow time to interview, let's say a week, get them interviewed. They're gonna have to go through our process, which is the background psych and physical test. Uh, I don't know the exact time here, that's something H R would, would, would take care of. Once they get through that, then everything passes, we can give them start dates on the shifts. That's how that would work. So that's why I've been really pushing, because the longer it takes, the longer it's gonna take, basically.
So we're looking at at least two months, two and a half months?
No, uh, from start to finish. If I were to get out, get six people now, um, let's say a week. Well, they'd be on the, within a month.
Within a month, okay.
Yeah.
Now, one other thing, how is your roster fixed to handle this transition period where you don't have these extra people? Cuz I assume the ones that are transitioning out, you know, you're using the people who are staying to cover whatever they're doing, correct?
Overtime comes in.
Yeah. Overtime again, okay.
That's the overtime killer right there.
Alright.
That's the seventy-five thousand that you allocated for?
Of, yes, yes. Well, i- and, and if the process is in play, auxiliaries are on board, everything is going like it should be going. And we have a situation where we have a person gets hurt on the job, for example. They're off for a month. We're gonna be tapping into that overtime spot on something like that. But your regular, standard, everyday staffing won't, won't affect it. We have enough people to alleviate that. It only kicks in hard if we have someone go out for an extended period. Not the, not the every now and then sick person here and there, or, you know, stuff like that. It's that I broke my arm, I'm out for two months. That's, that's where the problem comes in. But we have, Daryl and I have talked about that, and, um, we've got a little bit of a cushion to help us if that situation were to come about.
What do you mean they work, they won't work with a broken arm?
You're right.
I don't get that.
That's no excuse. Let me think of something better than that. They get killed, how about that?
Uh, we trying to avoid that right now. We don't even want to put that in there.
No.
Um, the last question is, we recently got an email from the governor's office stating that grants had been approved for first responders. This can be for, um, police as well as fire. And, uh, ninety-one thousand dollars was allocated to Incester. Have you?
That goes to the police department.
All of it, to the police department?
Yes.
Not fire?
Not fire.
Oh, okay, alright. I'm, I'm through, man.
Okay, for now. Say for now, I don't.
Oh. What's the name?
For now. You got some more? You told me you wanted to jump in on the H R stuff, so I got you. Alright, so we were, hey, we are broken, how you doing? Everything good? Alright, Councilwoman Washington, how you doing? Okay, so we're called up as it relates to the I F A contract. So, I don't know if you guys had a chance to review it. I know that everyone had a hard copy last week, and if you had any questions about it. Any other questions, comments?
Say, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
You may mention about something would be a wash. What, what would be the wash? Would, how, you may mention about that.
Yeah.
So, so this, this would not be equaled out without the thirty-four thousand annually?
So what happened was, when we last met, we hadn't included, not included, cost of the promotions within the department, once these guys leave. We hadn't, we didn't have any. That came up, I think the mayor asked that question, was that one cost? We went back to factor that through. So that's where it went from that zero to the thirty-four, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah, so, 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 you know, what, what, what prompt the increase or promotion? Why, why would they need?
Well, the three guys that will transition out, two of them are captains. They'll be gone. Sergeant will move up to captain, someone will move up to sergeant, and we will hire a new guy.
So, so that's, that's needed? I mean, that?
Yeah, I got it, yes, that's, yes, the position has to be filled. That's what you're asking.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm, I mean, point, like, if, if, you know, if anything. So, so why would that position need to be filled? I mean, couldn't it be filled with anything else? Or just that position that just need to be filled with?
Part of our operational structure. That's the captain position, that's the shift officer position.
So, it wouldn't be an increase? I mean, why would there be an increase?
Our structure goes captain, sergeant, firefighter. Right, okay. So when the captain goes out, sergeant becomes captain, firefighter becomes sergeant, and then you hire a new guy at the bottom. If, if things shifts up one move.
That's your thirty-four thousand.
That's where that comes in. Because we had, we initially calculated this with the savings. Uh, now bear in mind, that will get eaten, that, that will be too little, right? That one-time savings.
Well, you're right, uh, and I would use it, you know, when you try to do the overtime, in case you need it, or you try to soften the blow of the thirty-four thousand for the first year, you know. You got eighty-two thousand.
Deal, left. That's that cushion, you need something like eighty-two thousand, yeah. So, 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 yeah, that can be shaved off for one, that's just one year though.
You shave two, if you, if you wanted to.
Right.
Yeah.
It will probably be preserved, preference to keep it in case you need it for a different year. Right now, always that way, it's one eighty-two thousand, because we got additional made, that we have to make that move to make it work. So to have that eighty-two, in case it's gonna hold at seventy-five.
That's just for those emergencies.
If we have a, uh.
That's what you speak it of, right, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah. The things we can't predict are things, you know, they, they gave us headaches, which is like, well, what if, what if, man, I have to use it at all.
And then it can be, it can be geared towards that. Yeah. So, so what, 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 what is the difference? I think when we had last time, it was a savings, you had a couple of years of savings, so that was like a potential two hundred and some thousand. So, with that spread of last, making it to close session about what, what has changed? And I see the multiplier changed from in the new contract, two point eight, I think it was, or something like that.
And it's, it was, uh, initially, we were discussing three point oh.
Right.
And then we went down to two point eight five.
Yeah, I seen, I seen that.
That generated difference of, uh, thirty thousand dollars a year.
Okay.
That was, that was best, um, right? Because now it's forty, well, seventy, right?
Yep. So that's, 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 that's a cut. Now, with the, with the six officers, there's no longer a, a two percent increase with the six officers. That was last time we was talking about. That's not in it no more, okay. So, that was the twenty-three thousand per year. So would that be an additional savings, or that was just something that was just assumed that we was gonna try to do?
No, I don't think that's additional, because that was just something that was, uh, being discussed, negotiated.
Just on the table, okay. Okay, now, I, I seen in the new one, you talked about the, the paying for the schooling. So are we gonna be paying for schooling or?
No. I'm not, medic.
Yeah, paramedic.
We're not doing that. You should state that if, if an individual wants to pursue that license, licensure, they can at their own expense.
I'll, I'll come back to that. I think I was just looking at that. Uh, okay, so that was like maybe about five hundred dollars for the E M, EMS, right? EMS coordinator, you gonna have that training?
Oh, that one, that one position, you talking about five hundred dollars a year? Is that where you're at?
No, not in the contract, but what we talked about last time.
I'm not following you.
We, we talked about a yearly cost to the city, and one of the things, one of the items was the EMS coordinator, training officer, five hundred dollars per year.
That's what I'm talking about.
Okay, so that'd be the same thing?
Yes, yes.
Okay, cuz they had like, you know, a stipend of five thousand in this, in this contract.
It's currently forty-five hundred, it was gonna raise five hundred to equal five. You threw five hundred at me, I thought you were asking me what was the, the difference, you know, the increase, but it's actually, currently, the position pays forty-five hundred a year. The position is getting ready to double, it's getting ready to get, uh, more responsibility add to it, so that's where that five hundred dollars came from. That person is now gonna be, have a title of, uh, not, not only the, uh, I C within the training office as well, with the whole part. Saving there, you know, send our people out to get it done and paid for. And they have to remove their licenses, you know, things like that. Things that the state requires us to have, we'll do it in-house now, instead of sending people out.
Now, with the three retirees that was on personnel, so we, is that still gonna be the seventy thousand? Cuz that three percent retiree multiplier for all personnel, seventy thousand, so that's gone.
That's fifteen thousand. Per year, total.
Okay, so fifteen thousand on that.
It's five thousand for first.
Okay.
Year. There's three guys. Now, one or two is the left, actually, oh, then we might pay that.
So, I think you may mention about them forfeiting the banker, bank, banker hours, are they gonna still have them?
That's, that's where we get that eighty-two thousand dollar save.
Savings from, okay. That's eighty-two thousand. So the fire marshal is still gonna be on board? He's, is he still retiring and coming back for the nineteen?
The nineteen.
So now the total, what, what would be the total cost? So the thirty-two or thirty-four would be the total cost per year, instead of the hundred and twenty-one thousand that we had before?
Thirty-four oh oh four, yep.
Okay. Uh, that sounds, that sounds pretty decent, pretty reasonable. Yeah, that's a little easy.
It's not easy, cuz it's, it's a difficult situation.
But the comeback with that thirty-four, because it wasn't calculated before, that that was something that you was negotiating with them or talked to them about in order to come back to, to the treasury?
No, what we did was, that had to be added regardless, because it is going to happen. It's contractual, it's gonna happen. We, it was just an oversight, we didn't have it in there. And the mayor asked about it last session, about what is it gonna cost to promote these guys? And at first, I think everybody was a little confused, like, what is he asking us? And then we figured it out, oh, yeah, you know, these guys are gonna, two of the guys are gonna step up. So I sent that to Mr. Green, who it was, you know, what their salary is and what the difference is. And that's where the thirty, thirty-two thousand dollars came out per year. That's where that came from. It's like their salary is gonna increase.
Right.
You see what I'm saying? And that's what's gonna happen there. You know, the savings in is when we bring the new guys down here, and we take these high-paid guys out of the books, put these guys in at fourteen dollars an hour. That's where your big savings is at.
But the unknown is, you know, how, how long are we gonna be able to keep them and?
That's the unknown. I mean, you know, the fire industry, fire service, all over this country is crazy. It's crazy. It's just people are moving around like chess players. It's like, they're not thinking about, one day you got to retire. You need this time and grace, and it's not bouncing around. And I seen it, they're young, you know, hey, I'm going where the money's at, so.
Well, it's, I mean, the market calls for that, so, you know, that's what they're doing.
Yes, it's tough. It really is.
Okay.
Magic rabbit, I can pull out of the head on that one.
Yeah, I mean, because then, you know, I, I think one of the questions was asked before is that, you know, why don't we just go ahead on it? If overtime is the problem, just go ahead on it, just get the six firefighters or people that we need to be able to cut the overtime. I mean, because that was what was the problem.
That cost would be over a half million. And I, I didn't write a grant for six guys. I wrote that grant last year. I'm waiting to hear. We get that grant, that's gonna make a big difference in this whole situation, cuz now I can bring, you know, I don't, I'll have six guys paid for by government for three years that I can bring on, plus I have the option of the auxiliaries. At that point, overtime should just pretty much disappear. You see what I mean? Because there's, it, there's a lot of people there, a lot of bodies to fill the spots. That's.
World, yeah.
That's the.
Yeah, but I, I think if I can just chime in, Chief, I think this is the, the best way that we're doing it. You know, we were denied this year for, um, those additional officers to be covered by a grant. So, we don't necessarily wanna depend on that, we wanna.
Sorry, we would deny you what?
As far as the, you said the three officers possibly with grant, would it safer? We were denied for safer last year.
No, oh, no, it's still in play.
Yeah.
Safer, there's six guys I put in for. That hasn't been awarded yet. It haven't been denied or awarded.
Hmm.
No, not that one. That one I'm still waiting to hear from. That'll, that'll fix our headaches big time.
I don't know, Chief. I had to look into that. Yeah.
You know something I don't know there?
Yeah. I think I saw that, but I don't wanna speak that, I don't wanna speak that into existence, but.
You might be talking about the F T C grant.
Is that what?
Where, where we had that whole issue, when they sent you that email, and you asked me, what is this?
No, 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 I ain't talking about the roof and, and, and the bathrooms. I'm familiar with all of that stuff. I'm talking about the.
It's safer?
I'm with the people. I don't wanna speak it into existence, but.
No, that's, that's, no, that.
So you still waiting? How much longer are you waiting to see?
I gotta, I'm at the mercy of FEMA. They don't tell you when they're gonna send them out. It's all of a sudden, they send you an email.
Again, I think we on the right track as it relates to what we're doing with the auxiliaries.
That's, that's in a perfect world.
Yeah, we don't wanna even, I think that's what, what got us into a trouble the first time around, with accepting those guys on the grant and then having to pay out a hundred percent.
Yeah, that grant was a matching type grant.
What is this for?
This was a hundred percent funded.
And then when they're gone.
And it's a three-year grant, when it expires, then, then it's up to you to let them go or fund them.
See, that's, that's the dip, that's one of the difficult, yeah, that's one of the difficult things, because we get into something like that, and the tentacles are in. It's kinda hard to let those folks go, and then it looks, you know, diabolical, so to speak. You know, when we have to let them go, but the public don't understand.
That's right.
So, hey, we only had it for three years, and that get lost in the sauce.
That's right.
You know, down through the years. And then no one, you know, we, we wanna talk about, yeah, we wanna keep these firefighters, we don't wanna, and they calling, talking about, hey, they wanna fire us and this, and what have.
Oh, no doubt, no, sure.
That's, you know, that's the.
Yeah, I don't think we wanna, you know, that's just my opinion.
Yeah, but this, I mean, yeah, I mean, if we can, you know, still kinda cushion with that eighty-two, you know, if we need it, but, you know, to kinda skim off some of that thirty-four, I mean, you know, for, you know, within the next couple of years, I mean, I think it's, I think it's pretty good.
And a caveat to that also is, with that kinda grant, when you come towards to the end, you can reapply. Uh, you know, I'm just kicking the can down the road, I'm saying here, reapply to try to keep your people, it's a retention grant. It's just an option. If you were to take that route, something to keep in the back of your head, you get close to that three years, you still not doing so well, we can reapply for a retention grant.
Yeah, that's all I have.
Okay. Anything else?
Um, I'm sorry. Yes. Is there any provision within your contractual agreements to, um, like people who retire? Some, some cities or states or counties have retirees that can come back and work those positions for lower hours, less, um, you know, um, uh, for a reduced rate, but, you know, cuz some people who retired don't think it's tracked up to what it is, and they wanna continue to do what they're doing. Is there some provision where those seasoned people you have that are retiring might be able to come back at a lower rate of pay and?
Uh, that's, that's not in the contract per se.
Mm-hmm.
That is my plan, though.
Oh, okay.
Unless you guys tell me no.
Oh, so I could be, I could be fire chief.
Yes, you can. Come on in. Because it's, it helps, now I got, I, I got two positions I can cover with one guy.
Mm-hmm.
It's a cost savings to the city, it's a benefit to the department for the operations, it's, it's, it's a good deal all the way around. So when you started talking about that, I was thinking, yeah, that's what I'm trying to do right now, so, you know.
Okay, it was, it was.
That's not, um, a violation of any type on the union side. The city didn't have an issue.
Okay, and I have one more question, and I forgot to highlight it, but we can, we can proceed, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Yeah, Chief, this, thank you for you and Daryl for the work along with, uh, Jim Allen. I know you got to working really hard on it, so. And all the meetings that we had to go through, and I know that, uh, hopefully the, the, the folks at the fire department, they, they appreciate you. You know, cuz I mean, you're in a tough position. I mean, you're on both sides of it, you know, so. Hopefully, they understand that, and, um, I think this is the best thing for us to do as a body, so I'm just hoping that, um, everyone is, minds are satisfied. As a body, so I'm just hoping that, um, everyone is, minds are satisfied, and we can move forward from this issue.
I'd like to also thank Mr. Green too, cause he put a lot into that too.
Yeah.
Bunching these numbers.
Sure, he did, for sure. All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nades? I have emotion curious, chief.
All set.
All right.
Thank you.
All set, no, thank you. All right, this Joe Wright, it deserves a round of applause, all right, let's. Let's, uh, let, let's do this, uh, Councilwoman, I know that you had a question as it relates to, uh, personnel, we are coming to personnel, we just went to personnel. Um, because the treasurer asked us to, so we will get to that. We'll just go from there, all right, let's start it, uh, city clerk, please. So, and if you could, please just pop the mic now. Yes. We're in expenditure, we went through, um, revenues and. Went through the mayors and not with the city clerks. Oh, everybody, we should be in oh one.
So.
Two, five.
Yep, your city clerk, uh, document is not gonna be what's in, uh, BSNA, uh, that was. Prior to me actually meeting with the city clerk, so the numbers for the city clerk are in BSNA, and I'll read those all. Uh, for the salaries, uh, we have requested of one hundred nineteen thousand, three hundred and forty thousand. And that's what we have in the recommended budget as well. Yes, ma'am.
We're in the city clerk.
Right, in the city clerk.
Yep.
And that's, uh, the city clerk and the deputy. Part-time.
Uh, city clerk, you can go ahead and elaborate on it.
If, it, it includes for head counts, two full-time and two part-time.
And the number was again, I'm sorry.
Is that what you always had? Oh, city clerk.
No, what I had in last year's budget was, you mean for a head count or the dollar?
For a head count.
Um, head count, we were carrying three full-time. So now. Last year, for most of the year, I only carried, we had one part full-time and one part-time head count. So that explains why, um, we didn't spend up to that last year. So I was low on the head count, but now we. Um, balance that back out, and that's what the.
So, so.
Go ahead, please.
So, two part-time, is that because of the election on the.
Uh, well, Denise has always been part-time, and then another part-time for elections. To do, um. The QB at work. Yeah, because it's temporary.
So, two full-time, just wanna be you and then two or three full-time.
No, just me and one other full-time. The deputy.
Okay.
And. One part-time, two part-times, I'm sorry. And both of those, one permanent, one temporary.
So temporary is just seasonal, basically, when you have elections?
Yes.
When another temporary person is that person that we see sometimes in there.
Yes.
Gotcha.
Okay, all right, and then we have, uh, for the temporary salaries, we got the twenty-five thousand in there, that was requested. And we also have that as, as recommended for temporary. Twenty-five thousand.
And those will be for your election workers, correct?
Correct.
And for overtime, uh, we had a request of five thousand, and we also recommend the five thousand for overtime. Um, let's see. Or we can go down to operating supplies. And there was a request for fifty thousand for operating supplies. Uh, the previous year, there was one hundred and four thousand spent in operating supplies. Um, I mean, not, not operating supplies, I'm sorry, professional consultant, yeah, professional consultant. There was a hundred and four thousand spent in professional consultant last year, fifty thousand requested this year, so kind of a, a big difference that the clerk can explain.
Your activity is sixteen thousand this year.
Yeah, the activity is only sixteen thousand this year, yeah.
Okay, so what's that, city clerk?
So, it's only sixteen thousand this year because we didn't have any elections, we had one small election. And the consulting firm came in and. Uh, did everything they need to do with our equipment and. Our reporting equipment and our election equipment. And so it was just a small election, so it was only at sixteen. We have two large elections coming in. August and November, it will be. Based on our historicals, it'll be the same as the last presidential. So, in preparation for that, we have to have all our equipment. Check for accuracy and for security. So we use a company to do that and to. Get us ready for the election with all our new. Laws that may affect us and new processes that we may import to ensure that. Fair and equitable and free election.
And that's the professional consultant? Is that the professional consultant line item?
Yes, because the company we use is what they do, so. Well, coming up to each election, there are things, little caveats that we need to. If nothing more, but tune up on to be sure that. We don't have the staff full on election night.
Okay, so what is the, I'm sorry, were you through with someone else asking question? Oh, okay, so what is the professional SVC BSNA?
That, yeah, that's, that's not in city clerk.
It's not?
No, I don't, I don't think so.
Why not? Oh, information technology, okay, keep that to you, all right. My mistake.
Okay. So, um. Then next we have, uh, just, uh, bonus registration, we have a five thousand dollar request for that. And we recommend the five thousand last year, bonus registration was seventeen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Last year. So, five thousand seems quite reasonable. Uh, and then for the other items, um, just conference and workshops. You know, those all remain the same, a thousand dollars for, uh, conference and workshops. Uh, three hundred dollars for. Personal vehicle mileage. And then there's. Printing and advertising, five thousand dollars. Uh, eighty-four hundred for equipment maintenance, that's one that the clerk can explain, cause we didn't have any expenses for equipment maintenance. Last year, hardly any this year, but she said that that might be necessary because of some new equipment, clerk, you can. Explain it.
Give me one moment.
Yeah, I have it here though, over in the, my recommended, no numbers.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, cause I didn't, cause I didn't have it in there, cause I didn't see any equipment used last year or this year, so, but then after I spoke. With the clerk, she had mentioned something about there needing to be equipment purchased. Or equipment maintenance.
Wouldn't that be in that consultant number? On what you just explained?
Yeah, it's a separate one, and I. I mean, we can. Table it, I bring my notes. But. The reimbursement for that election covers that, and it covers. The voting registration ahead of it, so.
And do we have that reimbursement in the revenues for city clerk? Oh, we do? Okay.
Well, that's the case.
Five hundred dollar.
That's a case of Washington, but you said ten thousand, five hundred.
Yeah, so when?
There's eighty-four, eighty-four hundred and five thousand. Or if I'm looking at that right, no.
Eighty-four hundred, I think she's saying the revenue should be ten thousand. Let's see, oh, go on.
We got twenty-five hundred.
Oh, let's see.
Last year was in twenty twenty, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, it was ten thousand, five hundred and four. Uh, amended to twenty-five hundred, no activity, so was that twenty-five hundred?
So, we didn't have that activity last year because we did not have that type of election. So, we're, and just the election that we're having. And the fiscal year, uh, and this is just the elections I know about. I only know about the. The, um. Primary and the general, that's in August and November, I could very well have an. Election in March and May of next year. That I, a school board election. Now, those are reimbursable, but. I do have to have the manpower and spend the money upfront, so.
So, so we don't have it in here then, are you sticking with twenty-five hundred?
Extra, and yeah, so I'm sticking.
Okay.
She said you don't have the reimbursement in there. So you need to put that in there, cause it's only twenty-five hundred on reimbursement, it needs to be ten thousand, five hundred.
No, that's what I'm asking her now, are.
Yeah, I need that.
Okay.
So, I, I, if I may.
Of course.
I have been distinctly responsible with my budget. I analyzed the budget. And I went through and. Did a good estimate of what I needed, based on what's to come in this year. That I know about. So, last year wasn't, we had one school board election that involved three precincts. So, it was really a cheap election, but. The prime, the general, the primary and the general is going to cost, we will give reimbursements, but. We have to be prepared to. I have to have it available to spend what I need to spend to execute that request.
Yeah, please.
Say five thousand to start you off? Will, will that be enough?
With what?
We've been asking for, we hadn't requested. Of course, twenty-five hundred, not eight thousand.
Eighty-four.
Eighty-four, so will five thousand be sufficient to, to right now, or what do you think?
I know I did that number for a reason, and I just. So, five would be fine, I could. If I need to do something else, I could probably go back.
Then you talking about, we would have to come back for an amendment of thirty-four hundred dollars, that's not a lot of money, so. If you need it in there, let's put it in there. I, I mean, I trust what you're saying, if you say that you analyzed it, it's what you need. But we need evidence, that's what, you know, we, we're, we're all looking for, saying basically what it is that you. Which is, but we know that it's gonna spin, right? Where's the reimbursement coming from, I guess that's the biggest question.
Account.
Okay.
And so we're going with the ten-five for the reimbursement?
Mm-hmm.
Going with the ten-five?
I would.
Okay.
I mean, it's up to this body, but at the same time, I'm okay with that.
Is that city clerk, ten-five for the reimbursement?
Yes, that's important.
And, and let's make sure that we put that into the notes when you get that information from her. What it is, as, in BSNA. Okay. All right, Councilwoman Washington, I saw you, did you, did you have something? Yes.
So. Would you not have, uh. Any recommended budget for the equipment? Or we just have the equipment, uh, to make, to know who had it quick?
Yeah, no, no purchase of equipment, this is just for maintenance.
That's not new purchases.
Are we doing the eighty-four or the five?
I would say.
Eighty-four.
Yeah, you okay with that, all right, let's do eighty-four of it. Yep. Yeah, eighty-four, and then just get that to us.
All right, and that'll pretty much round out the, uh, city clerk, um. Let's see, the last thing, just education and training was twenty-five hundred, yep, education and train, training twenty-five hundred. As, and then six hundred for.
She's always going to do something, her educational stuff. And she gotta get updated on new laws and stuff as they changing, especially right now, what's going on with everything in America. You know, with voting, right, so that needs to be in there.
It's in there. It just wasn't spent last year, wouldn't spend this year.
Okay, but still, put it in there.
Okay, it's in there, it's in here now.
No, ma'am, you're fine.
Mm-hmm. Right. Yeah. Yeah, I was just trimming down, that's all.
We put the twenty-five hundred back in at the train.
Twenty, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
For training, yeah, just turn your mic on, ma'am.
I'm sorry.
Oh, you're fine.
Okay.
All right.
And I'm back, I'm, I'm, I'm with a couple in Washington, so no equipment, you, you don't. You, so all your equipment that you have for the election, does it come from somewhere, somewhere else? What if something breaks down, one of your?
We have spare and backup, and we have. That's part of our agreement with the, um, the, the consultants is that. If our spares and backup aren't enough, then they provide that.
Okay.
They have a network to give us that equipment right away.
Okay.
I see expanding in future years, but I don't see it this year.
Gotcha. All right, any other questions for, uh, city clerk? All right, let me move right along to information technology, please.
Okay, information technology, uh, we starting out. Oh. Well, we put, right now, I got Troy in there at forty-one thousand, six hundred, I see that there's nothing budgeted in there for requested. But that was because we didn't have Troy in there, and we were trying to, you know, we had him picked, figured out we couldn't do that, right? And then we were talking about putting him back in the mayor, then we say, well, why do we put him in information technology? That's what we discussed in the last time we gathered together.
We said we were putting him back in the mayor's office.
You wanna put him back in the mayor's, okay.
We all said that.
All right, so we take him out of information technology, okay.
And the forty thousand for, for. Go into the line item for information technology, so.
Yeah, that's for, yeah, I mean, I mean, I did that part for the, um, information, but this was just for salaries.
Right.
For information.
My buddy would go up to like two, back up to two hundred, or whatever it was.
Okay.
Troy back in there.
Okay, well then, we need to go back up to mayor then. At least to make sure that that's in there. Then we got you at two hundred, let me see, let's go make sure. We got you at two oh six six, yep, so we did throw him in there, so I can just go ahead and just take that out.
That's right, so, we, we said that the, coming out of the courts. Technology budget. We put into information technology.
Yep.
Of course.
So the court was paying forty thousand for their own IT people, whatever, this is a mess over there.
Okay, so we gonna, oh, put it, and where would that go?
Well, we just go right into the line item for IT. Um, so you have. Pro, professional consultant, sixty-six thousand, so you would add forty thousand to that.
That'd be one oh six, yep, one oh six for that one.
Then it'll come back for us, and we'll approve it. With the contract with the people, if you're gonna extend them out.
Okay, yeah, just love.
So, okay.
Doing everything in the city now.
Okay, so, um. I know, um, the internet web service, that's, they asked for ninety-seven, and you took it to seventy-five online, online.
So, internet web service, and Mr. Green, just to make sure we're all on the same page, how much do you have for us?
Uh, we have seventy-five in there now. Um, there was a quest for ninety-seven, but you know, when I look at requests, I also look at activity and rationale. Last year, there was forty-seven spent, this year, only, uh, seventy-one.
And that's the changeover from the, uh, web service.
Okay.
That's for, that's for, uh, one, two, three net.
Okay, okay, so. In this line item upon the information technology, is there, um, way they can give us a dollar amount? Cause I know they still updating our systems. Is there a way they can give us a dollar amount to tell us, like, this is how much it's gonna cost the city to update all of this? Because like you said, we just getting checks, you know, in the check registry for five thousand, six thousand. So is, is there a way that they can actually just? Give us, I know it might be an estimated guess, but.
Yes, no, 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 I had them doing the hard number reports.
Okay.
Because I know we've asked. Because I know we've asked for that a couple of times and they came and presented a couple of times and they still haven't given us, so. Tony Roberts, the person that was before you last time around, that's what he's been doing now. Gathering that information on what it's gonna take to make sure that the system can come up to date.
Okay.
All of the computers being alike, one thing that is happening right now in the city, some people have Dell, some people have Apple, some people have, you know, so it's like. Nothing is uniform.
Right.
And it may be a different software that's running this versus the software for Matt, you know? So I'm like, okay, listen, man, give us everything that it will be just to be uniform. And then the cost is what it is, but at least we had a breakdown and then we can pick and choose and phases what we wanna do each year. Right now, the system is getting up to where the point is, it's at a point where they can work remotely. And fix a lot of our stuff, because of the hardware and because of the information technol, I mean, the, um. The data stream that we have coming in now with one, two, three net being everywhere, you know, they actually doing a pretty good job, we haven't had a lot of. Down stuff outside of the licensing stuff that we need to fix, which I know that the council has an issue with that, which. We've been talking with them with that and they're kinda like, you know, okay, we wanna get to a contract and how does that look, so I told them during the brother process, we're bringing those things up. No questions will come, they told me that they've met with several of you on different occasions, you know, however. Um, we wanted to bring something solid back to this body saying this is what it looks like now, and this is what we're trying to get to. And it's how much it's gonna cost us.
Okay.
So that's that, because that was one of the things that when, 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 when Mr. Dura said that, I mean, I T is costing us four hundred and twenty seven thousand. I was like, what? But it's the telephone, it's the web service, it's all of the stuff into one. It's not just for I T. Like equipment a year, we ain't spending no more than what is like thirty grand in equipment. But really, we probably need to spend a hundred and fifty or quit. Some of this stuff is like. It's, it's, it's wild, we have some stuff, we, you guys, if you get a chance, one day we just walk you through, we got some stuff that's really outdated. You know, it's, it's really outdated, but, uh, we're working and it's coming together. I think the move with the, with the John, with Pam, with the new, new court administrator coming in. And she saw right off, like, hey, nothing's been done with this. Money we're paying for it, so they're doing an investigation on that right now. At least their service, if they combine with us, then we'll get a bigger bang for our service, we'll have somebody that's actually stationed over at Justice Center every day.
Somebody stationed, you mean an I T person?
Yes. And they'll be able to, then since that's there, they'll be able to keep calling back and forth between P D and the courts. Exactly, they'll be right there. Yeah.
Okay, um, in the next line item, we have, uh, B S and A now. It was requested that we, um, spend thirty one thousand on. Uh, or budget thirty one thousand, we have that recommended and then last year it was only twenty eight thousand, but for this year, for some reason, it's a little more. And it seems like that should be flat, since we have some, just some agreement with them, we shouldn't be getting charged. More than what we budgeted for, for B S and A, shouldn't we?
Yeah, that, you know, and that's, that's the thing too, that we need to look at to see if it's, if that's the only service. That does what it does, I don't think nobody's really looked at that. You know, so that's something that we probably need to charge ourselves with between you and I.
Okay.
Look and see exactly if there's other services out there similar to B S and A, that may even be more up to date or more. Easier to use for the community, but I don't know. You know, I don't know if anybody on this body can speak to that.
Necessarily, I know we talked about digitizing some things, different modules that may be out there with different companies. I wasn't sure if they did the exact same thing as B S and A, but I know a lot of times we'd be like, well, if it ain't broke, don't fix it, but B S and A been broke a lot.
That's, that's the.
I would be open to you all searching just to see what's out there, you know, we always kinda get. A little scared when it's time to make change, transition over, even with the. Going over to one, two, three net, but we knew the provider we had was to go upgrading services, not at all, hard enough. Top dollar for bottom of the bureau service because of these, right? So, that, that, always a. Supporting guys and going out and looking.
Okay, because it's the same thing, Steve, what you just said, it's like, B S and A knew that they had a cloud service, right? But they never told us.
Exactly.
It's like, if, it's like, come on, man, like, you wouldn't tell us you got a cloud service, so if one of our customers are trying to pay their water bill. Our server here, if the city goes down, now you can't pay your water bill, but you got a cloud service to where it never goes down. They never told us that. So after digging and doing some, you know, some more research and safe working with their group and. G G coming in and Dura coming in, you know, I T people coming in now, oh, we got a cloud based service. Why wouldn't you been told of that?
They see my direction by going and moving the services, you were out here looking, so.
That's that part, yeah, so I would like to be able to do that. Go ahead.
Didn't, Stephen, didn't we talk about this when we were trying to learn how to work it and Troy said we didn't wanna get rid of B S and A?
No, I know we, he was telling us about a module or something, but I can't recall that particular, there you go.
Okay.
In my mind and out of my heart.
What you thinking though would be S and A?
No, I'm, I'm in agreement with B S and A.
You like this?
Yes.
Okay.
The, the one service that we use for our checks and it's been. Uh, that was my concern with that, because we use the estimated plug in. Uh, the numbers.
Alright, talking with D M A R O. Got you, okay, that's what you was talking about, okay. Alright, Troy's been around here a long time, so I, I listened to him. So he know all the bodies and skeletons buried, but at the same time, we're gonna still go out and just see what's out there, just cause the world is.
Oh no, I, I totally agree, we should go out and look, you should always. Up the grade or check and see if you're getting the best.
Yeah, and that way they can say, hey, you know, they looking, but when you're not looking, that's when they. Charge you for two hundred and twenty seven services. Twelve years and then say, oh, we're gonna give you a rebate for nineteen thousand dollars, ridiculous, anyway. On another subject, I get off that.
He won't give you any money, but we'll give you a credit.
Exactly, that crazy, unbelievable. Unbelievable, okay, alright, let's move along, treasury.
Okay, um, and then we have the, um, uh, telephone. You know, and we've got that at two hundred and twenty thousand, last year there was like two hundred and forty four thousand spent. Um, so, you know, only one fifty eight so far this year. Uh, so, you know, I figure two twenty would probably be about a safe number for that.
Yeah, we know that they said that they were, you know, doing some rebates and services and stuff like that, that's another thing too, I mean, we just need to look at the service. You know, I mean, two hundred and twenty two thousand dollars for home service nowadays, I don't know if there's different options. There's some different technology out there.
Yeah, um, but remember, how many phones do we actually have though in the municipality overall?
No doubt about that. A lot of lines for sure.
So, but it's still something to look at as far as provider wise. I know it's, that's quite the task when you do switch to providers, even though everything can be plug and play with VoIP. Um, the reason I say that is. We did the one that the P D. The way the firewall was set up. And we call in the actual provider for trouble shooting, they couldn't provide that. And so we had to figure it out ourselves and work backwards. But that's what, that, it's that, they're, they're out there, it's just, what are the rates? Because now with everybody switching to cell phones and stuff. Um, landlines, everything like that, business accounts, I'm sorry, are like double what you would pay at home. You might get the same phone service at home, thirty five dollars, but you gonna pay seventy or eighty here.
Yeah. Alright, Mr. Green.
Okay, uh, so that'll be it for information technology. Uh, moving down to treasury. So for the salaries for treasury, it was one forty six, eight hundred was the budget last year that you guys had for the budget this year. I mean, for this year, but so far there's been one twenty eight, five ninety two spent. But last year, there was one fifty eight, one sixty six that was spent. Now, I don't know if. Everybody out of treasury has been getting paid the right, or some people should have been coming out of water, because we talked about that. What was coming out of treasury, so. I mean, the number I put in there was one forty two, seven. And I'm just thinking, is, is, that's just, is that covering just me and Walter? For treasury?
Right.
I just wanna get clear on that.
Cashiers through the water department. Okay, explain that. Okay, so that's where it's one fifty eight.
Okay, so I need to bump that up there, because that's why I took it down, because I was like, that seems high if it's just me and Walter.
Yep.
Okay, alright, so then out. So I probably need to change that then to probably. One sixty maybe then, because one fifty eight was spent last year. So I'll probably just have to change that to one sixty, if that's the case.
So, so, Mr. Jerry.
Go ahead.
You have, uh. Your notes.
You guys speak up, sir. We can't hear you.
You have.
Your mic is on? Okay, go ahead.
You, you have your, your, your notes there that. You got another three hundred thousand, so that's gonna be on top of that, one sixty.
Another three hundred what again?
Three hundred thousand for cashier.
Three hundred thousand?
I mean, I'm sorry. Three thousand, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, three thousand for head cashier, is that gonna be additional to?
No, that'd be, that's, that's one.
So that's coming out of your?
Yeah.
Alright, okay.
Okay, so that's coming out of your budget?
So is that the requested, the additional? So that should go into?
Yeah, that's water, yeah.
Okay, so it's under, it's under treasury.
So, yeah, so it'll be under, but it's under treasury with the, with the gentleman just said.
No, it's not under treasury, no, that was just a note he was reading.
Oh, okay. Okay.
That you had it under there.
Yeah, because I didn't know, again, he just cleared it up that that was coming out of his department.
So it's gonna be there, okay. Okay, so, so it's not in that number, in the one sixty?
That's what I'm saying.
Okay, alright, so yeah, the one sixty be totaled by itself.
Right, okay.
What from everybody's mumbling or is it?
Same, I thought it was just my ears today. There you go.
What two are in his budget?
Right. That's what he was saying, as, as far as those two people. It's gonna be, they're not reflected in this number. There was a note, it's, it's another document, it's like this, that had all the notes in it from the breakdown, yeah, and it had three thousand dollars in there for cashier. But it should be in the treasury, I mean, in the water department.
So they pay for?
Right, they split half and half. Yeah.
But this one sixty is just, uh, Mr. Green and Walter, right?
No, in half of the other.
Everybody else. Yeah, yes.
How many everybody else?
Where you have with Anita?
Uh, three, three other people. They have.
Okay.
Well, so yeah, so me and half of four people there, so it's Walter, June. Allison and Anita.
Okay.
Four people.
You might as well just stay up there.
Everybody works in the treasure office, I pay fifty percent. That for June and the new position we created, that's a hundred percent. And the trash, I don't pay fifty percent for the trash.
So we should have brought our, them.
But that's why we're going through it like this, so you actually have live B S and A. Putting it in right here, and we going through the discussion right here, so we're all talking together.
That's, that's very important.
Yeah, so as the numbers we're talking, we're putting enough, actual numbers in, or taking them out, decreasing them, however. And then when we do, we save and try to save some trees, so when this is printed out, he gonna put it in a binder for you. And then you just go from there, of course. But with that, now I wanna commend Mr. Bibens, uh, uh, for having the foresight to understand this, because we have a water problem in the city of Kingston, we are aware of it. Um, understanding that, um, not only a- as we increase our infrastructure, which is being, is great, we're having water main breaks all over the place. But we do have a water meters that we haven't, you know, we're, we're trying to address, we're still far behind as relates to the delivery on those water meters.
Right.
I'm about the issue, you want me to?
Well, yeah, when we talk.
So. The water meters that we were getting were smart meters from Elster, they came from Ukraine. So we found that out this year too, I didn't know. Probably we now are getting meters from the germ. But we will not see, not only bought fifty, because I wanna make sure they compatible with our system. And we won't, we don't need the party hot over November, because it's a hate fund, you're like. But right now, we have no means.
Exactly, and June is stuck at the window. She's stuck at the window. Exactly, so that's what Mr. Bibens, oh, creating that other position.
I think Mayor said, I, we had discussion. And clearly we need to stretch, because June. Needs to be dealing more with residents. Because what she did for the residents, she can't resolve because of me and Troy. But I need her not on the window. So I'm replacing her with a head cashier, which we be doing with June for. At that last window, she'll be counting the money, big check, so we got, we have. We have triple check now, so we got head cashier counting out the money, you want to verify, then go to the treasure. So just trying to improve the system. Because that's creative, because I need June now, it's good, these meters are issued, this. I get bombarded, so I need somebody to get before they get.
And the money that we're losing.
That's always been the case, and he said that year after year. Right.
She don't, she's, she's stuck in there.
Right.
The system was designed for somebody to, I see. I remember when Sandra, while, while we asked you, and I told her, no, I don't have to buy a monitor in the system every day. Now I will.
That's good.
That would be true.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's always, since we have these meters.
But see, they sold it on the one thing, that the one was supposed to, they can drive by and. You know what I'm saying, but that's what they, that's what they, that's what they sold it on.
And you know doubt about that, and then the other part of it is, is, uh, again, being creative in all of it, you know, of course, when June gets organized to the best of her ability. Is that she'll be then too, uh, working with Walter, calling about the personal property taxes that we haven't been collecting. In a number of years.
It sounds like she may need another person to help her.
It possibly may happen, but at the same time, she'll be able to supervise that process. And, and we know that Walter's there and he's doing a lot, a little bit of stuff, you know, we're making sure that we're taking care of him at the same time. You know, we, we, we need to increase our revenues. And we haven't been, you know, these commercial buildings, commercial properties that we have, we actually supposed to be getting. Personal property taxes on, we just haven't been collecting, because we haven't had anybody to collect.
Wow.
Mayor, for your question, what the mayor has told you. When I was building and collecting supervisor, that's what I did. I deal with the water, the taxes. We had an outside company to go to the commercial people to get our personal property taxes. So I was the winner last time we did that.
Wow. Okay.
Yeah. Minister all that, also work on those internal weaknesses that we have from the audience, you know? Yep, for sure. It's part of it. Okay, go ahead, uh, please, Treasury, I know you ain't get off with the one, the one, go ahead, the next one.
Alright, um, and then just moving right on down to treasury, there was. I don't know why, there was five thousand for overtime, we don't use no overtime treasury, so I took that out, so. No overtime treasury.
Mr. Chair.
Please.
I just have one, and we move back, if, if, if you can indulge me real quick. With the notes, you talked about the, in the I T department. Um, I think it was like sixty, sixty six thousand. Or what, was that G L?
You would have an under preferred professional consultant?
No, no.
Eight oh one?
Yeah, eight oh one.
Yeah. That's the sixty six.
Yeah, it should be one oh six.
So it's one oh six.
Recommended.
It's one oh six?
Yeah, cuz we taking forty thousand from, uh, the court and bringing it over to I T, correct?
Yeah. It should be one oh six.
Okay, cuz it was a total of sixty six thousand, right?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, I, okay, that's.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Green.
Alright, and then for group insurance, there's, you know, I'm still investigating this group insurance, something is not right in terms of the, um, um, capturing it and journalizing this year because there's no way that there was eighty thousand dollars spent on group insurance and treasury this year, no way. Last year, there was thirteen thousand spent, only eighteen thousand budgeted. So we got nineteen thousand budgeted for next year, so I don't know why this is like this, but when I click on it and I go to it, I see that a lot of huge premiums have been paid under treasury for group insurance, and this is, can't be right at all. So I'll be taking a look at that, so I just didn't want anybody to look and say, well, wait a minute, it was seventy nine thousand, why you only got nineteen? Because something wasn't done right this year.
Was this under our previous insurance company?
No, this is the current insurance, cuz we're still with the same insurance companies, we just switched brokers.
Yeah, okay.
The carrier is still the same.
Right.
And this is health insurance, this is totally different from the guy's U S I that came in.
Okay.
Yep, so. Um, so, and then just for social security, we've got eleven thousand three hundred. Um, and, and you know, those numbers right there, they'll be consistent, and again, I'll be printing this out once we're done, and you guys will have the exact printout from B S N A. Uh, we moved down to the, um, office supplies. There was seven thousand dollars requested, seven thousand dollars recommended, we spent seventy eight hundred last year, spent about six thousand so far this year. So seven thousand seems to be appropriate. Uh, for postage, I left that at thirty six thousand seven hundred. Last year, we spent about twenty eight thousand eight forty five. This year is quite low, which, uh, again, that's one of my highlighted items that I'm going to be actually investigating to see why it was so low. But have about thirty six thousand seven hundred in their budget, that's what, that's what was recommended last year. So I just kept that in there for this year as well.
Just, just a sidebar, do we pay the same, uh, postage as, uh, you know, every day people, or do we have a special rate? Because they getting ready to raise the price of the stamp to sixty cents again, so I'm just.
That's why I went up.
Huh?
No.
Yeah, that's why it's thirty six thousand seven hundred.
Please.
Your postage was low this year because I didn't have an election.
Okay, see there we go.
That's gonna be exponential, so look back at the.
And that's what I did, yeah, and that's why, that's why I didn't reflect it on this year cuz I figured it might have something to do with that.
Yes, that's a big function and it probably should.
You would think that we would get a break.
It's so small. It's so small. She said.
Two, three times two million.
Okay, and then for professional consultant, we've got thirty thousand in there.
What is that, Mr. Green? I, I should have asked that question before.
Actuaries.
Okay, got you.
Can you explain all of those?
The actuaries?
No, no, just the, uh, you got four different professional.
Oh, 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 four different line items, okay. Yeah, the first one is, uh, the actuaries. The second one is, I believe, plant Moran. Uh, okay, uh, let's see, the.
About the thirty thousand plant Moran?
No, no, that's.
I was about to say, yeah, cuz I know that ain't right.
No, that, that was the actuary.
My fault, you got thirty thirty.
Yeah, that was the actuary.
Posted there and.
Yep, so thirty thousand for the actuaries.
Sixty is plant Moran for sure.
Sixty for plant Moran. And the next one is audit, our auditor. Auditor. Yep, Raymond. Yep, and then our assessor. So we've got from, just so we clear, uh, Raymond, we've got sixty five thousand for the, um, audit services, and we've got one hundred and not, I probably, it said, it had one hundred and thirty six in here budgeted. Last year, there was only one thirteen spent. This year so far is only one oh five, so I just put one twenty.
For?
For what?
For our assessor, yeah.
One twenty? One twenty? One thirty six?
Keep it at that.
Keep it at one thirty six?
At the one thirty, you got activity, you say it up to one twenty right now?
No, activity is only one oh five, and then last year was only one thirteen. I'm like, why one thirty six? That doesn't make sense, that's like taking into our budget. One twenty, yeah. One twenty sounds safe. Alright. And let's see, the next line item was, uh, telephone, we've got five hundred dollars for telephone bill.
What, what you guys have, y'all got a bat phone over there?
I don't know, I'm looking at three seventy nine right now, it says A T and T pass due amount, three seventy nine. So I'm gonna have to speak with Walter, he probably put this into the wrong, this is the wrong general entry because all telephone bills should go just to the general telephone bill line item, it shouldn't come to treasury.
Exactly, okay, good, that's good, that's why we're doing all this stuff.
We can take that five hundred out there, right?
Yeah.
That'll help us, alright, so we're gonna take that out. Alright. Uh, conferences and workshops, I just put five hundred in there, we didn't do anything last year, we didn't do anything this year. Um, I just put five hundred in there for that, just in case we wanna do something. Uh, and for, uh, personal vehicle mileage, just got two fifty in there, just in case we need to do something with that. Um, printing advertising, seventy two hundred. Last year, we spent sixty five hundred, this year so far sixty two, so I put seventy two in there just to be safe. The next item is subscriptions and memberships, got two hundred dollars in there. It was, but we requested four hundred, I thought about, I say, we can probably do, do with two hundred for that. Education and training. Uh, spent about six hundred and thirty five last year, nothing this year, so I just put five hundred dollars in there for education. Refunds and rebates. You know, well, we got, um, twenty six thousand this year, not a lot last year, only six thousand. Um, you know, it's kinda hard to determine what those refunds and rebates are gonna be. So I just. Uh, I can, let me see, I'll.
These are expensive, alright, Mr. Green, this is about refund and rebate to people, customers, right?
Yeah.
Oh, this is custom.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it's kinda hard to, you know what I mean, especially with, you know, water issues or whatever. So I just put twenty in there just in case, cuz we did, we had twenty six thousand this year. For equipment, I just got a thousand dollars in there for equipment, we didn't spend but eight hundred this year, only nine sixty five last year. It was requested at two thousand, but I say we can take that down to a thousand.
You got all new computers in treasury?
I mean, yeah, we, we should be good right now.
Okay.
And that's gonna be one thousand, not two?
One thousand, yep, one thousand.
He said he has all the computers in treasury. I know that they did do a lot last year going, so, I mean, buying equipment between last year and the year before.
And that'll round out treasury, and then the next one is the building maintenance department. Well, we'll start with fuel. And the fuel, we got three thousand in there, spent about twenty nine hundred this year, so far twenty two hundred last year. So we got three thousand in there for that.
Just question, I mean, when you talk about, I mean, I know we've spent a lot more fuel, what is, what is, what is this, why is this broke out into like this department? When you say building maintenance? Why you have? Oh, okay, so that's what it is, okay, but so it probably should be mayor's fuel or something like that?
It says in the footnote.
Oh, in the footnote, okay, uh, thank you, Phil, ma'am.
Maybe I should just put this right here.
Right, yeah, okay, wasting y'all time, my fault, go ahead. But Mayor Proton been over here already on. Uh, go ahead, that's a good one.
Alright, and then the next line item we're looking at is our, um, it looks like our security. And we have seven thousand was requested, I put thirty five hundred because last year only thirty four hundred was spent, this year only thirty three, so I didn't see why seven, seven was the budget for this year, but we only spent thirty three, so I, I only got thirty five hundred in there. Get back at seven? Okay. Okay, okay.
I agree with that.
Well, we're gonna put that back to seven.
Know it's eating away at your little block, Mr. Green. Over there with your pencil.
Alright. Okay, so, and then the next line item is gonna be our insurance. And we have, uh, four hundred and seventy two thousand in there for insurance, I did get the, uh, updated information from our insurance company today with all of our, uh, new, uh, premiums and stuff, so I'll be able to actually just confirm those numbers, but uh, so far this year, we spent four hundred and seventy one thousand, uh, last year was only three fifty five. So four seventy two is in there, uh, which should be sufficient, and again, I'll, uh, double check that as well. That's, again, we won't, I won't be able to confirm that until I look at the information closely, more closely. Yeah, I know, for the building, yeah.
We know. Yeah. Yeah, I know.
Yep.
And I'm saying, what's the difference between the, the, the two where we talked about the increase in the?
What, last year?
Well, at the emergency that we had, and we had to take in, they said our insurance increased.
Right, yeah.
Certain number, is that it?
No, this, this is just for the builders, you, that's liability insurance.
Okay.
Alright, um, the next line item is utilities. And, uh, we got two fifty nine, five sixty was, um, requested. I put two forty two, just looking at the numbers, last year, we only spent two hundred thousand, this year, one eighty six. Two four, two fifty nine seemed to be quite high. So I took it down to two forty two. Just trying to look at, you know, history and activity, unless somebody can give me some more explanation as to why, you know, I mean, that rationale doesn't work, I'm making adjustments based on that. Okay.
Is that typically what you, what you see, since you've been here?
I don't see, I mean.
A three percent increase?
Isn't that in? And if that increase is based on just amended budget as opposed to increase based on the activity? You know what I mean, my, when I do an increase, I like to do the increases based on the activity as opposed to what was budgeted. So the increase on the activity might have been two fifty nine, five sixty because, I mean, increase on the budget might have been two fifty nine, five sixty because the budget was two forty seven, which is a little higher than the activity. So if he actually did a three percent increase on what happened, it would be less than the two fifty nine.
Yeah, 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 I see it, I mean, you're talking about the one seventy six, I see it.
Okay, alright, and then for our, um, building maintenance. I put one hundred thousand in there, last year, we spent ninety thousand, this year so far seventy five. One hundred was requested, one hundred was recommended. For equipment maintenance, uh, forty five was requested. Um, I don't know why, there's, there's only twenty five in there now, I think we probably should raise that up, you think, Mr. Bivens? Equipment maintenance?
Yeah, activity was eighteen.
Yeah, actively was a little low this year, but it was a little higher last year.
Yeah, I see it was forty three the year before.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll take that back to forty five.
Yeah.
Okay, um, vehicle maintenance and repair, now I didn't, there was nothing required, this is a question, nothing put in, is that because of the new fleet management? Alright, so nothing for that. And then the, um, capital improvements, there was one hundred and thirty two thousand that was put in there for requested, I didn't put anything in there for uh, recommended. Uh. You see anything?
Anybody got a note, Mayor Proton, you got a note on that?
City Hall parking lot.
I would be asking you.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. Or, or, or we, it won't be a parking lot.
Oh, yeah, the city hall.
In that parking lot?
Yeah, the city hall, yes.
That's what I know.
So we're putting that back in at one thirty two?
Have a parking lot.
Right, right.
Oh, yeah, cuz the mayor just dropped some gravel off over.
We barely still.
Man, like seriously.
Okay, so one thirty, one thirty two. Ate up a lot of your black, Mr. Leber.
Say one more time?
I said ate a lot of your black up right there, but, uh.
You gotta, it, it will, I mean, we, once we get to the bottom, that's when this body will decide what we gotta do.
Alright.
How much you need to do?
A one hundred and thirty two thousand.
So what you putting at a hundred and thirty two?
What, what, wait a minute, hold on back up, you said it's gonna cost us a hundred and thirty two?
That's what he's, that's what he got in there.
Wait, wait a minute, wait a minute.
That's what he put in there for requested.
For the parking lot.
For the parking lot.
I know.
That's the lease payment?
I think, I think, I think, no, 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 let me, let me go out to some monies for that. Let me see if I can get some rent monies for that.
That coming out your budget, right?
No, it's not coming out, it's my general.
Oh, oh, no, no, well, yeah, well.
Can't afford that, no, you can't afford that.
Yeah.
I say rest from that, what you mean?
Yeah, somebody fall. Yeah, yeah.
Come on up to the mic.
Right.
What's that take out my, out the bottom line? Again, so I'm saying that was it. So I'm saying that it, that's what I'm saying, so what was, what was my bottom line before we started?
Where we at?
That's gonna be ate up. I mean, I don't, I mean.
We're, yeah, we're building maintenance capital improvement, uh, the last one, capital holiday.
Oh, okay.
It was zero, it was zero.
I don't know how magical it is, but some of this is small, be water too, cuz I got, I we do the rain and show the kids in the way, that's why the parking lot messed up, if it don't drain.
There's no way that we could pass a budget with no fund balance. You, you see what I mean? I mean, the fund balance before we started, they was a hundred and sixty thousand. So we know that we can dip that a little bit, and it's probably like a hundred and fifty thousand, some forty some thousand. If you're talking about doing a parking lot, that's a hundred and thirty thousand. Say one more time? Hmm, why don't you cut that down to nothing? I mean, we gotta figure this out, I mean. I mean, I mean, I don't know, now Steve, I know one thing, just a quick question for you and Regina, cuz I know you guys both working over at State, um, with the arc funding, as we're going after infrastructure, they're like, it won't cover our municipal buildings, is there some reason why they not allowing to go towards municipal stuff? Is there some reason why they not allowing to go towards municipal stuff? I think they want you to do that on your own. And we can't afford it. Community. So the building's gonna just fall apart that we servicing people here. Trailer out there and calling the city hall, that's what, that's what they want us to do on a dirt road, seriously. Right. So you say some of it is, uh, out of that hundred and thirty thousand, is it a hundred thousand?
Hey. So I, I mean, I can cut it down to eighty, and I just gotta work with it.
I'm just saying, I, I, uh, again, I mean, you know, this body is, again, I told you guys, we did work really, really hard to give you a true budget. And Plan Moran, we was on the phone with them today, everybody's in one accord, the state feeling good. Hundred and sixty thousand at least for us to start our new year with, and we get in these revenues of projected at least another million if we sell our properties the right way. Are we going good? I think we should at least maybe wait and, and do some of these RPs and put those out there so we can get some money in. Property sales and then do this infrastructure project. But I get what you're saying, gambling, but I just can't, I'm, I'm just saying, man, you're talking about. Again, no money in the fund balance, nothing, zero. Ten thousand is like zero dollars. We supposed to have at least sixteen percent, so we supposed to have at least one point six million in fund balance. I'm just saying, I know, I know that this is need, I know it's needed. I think that's, I think that's the route we should take first, because I mean, we even, you know, we've been talking about speed bumps. I mean, today it's like a, a viral post that's on Facebook right now talking about our inaction on speed bumps, but we don't have the money. We know these are safety concerns, but we don't have the money, because our money comes from state share revenue and taxes from our citizens. And that's the reality that we're living in. Well, I, I don't know, I mean, so to this body.
It wasn't, it wasn't in our notes anyway, I mean, there must have been another note, I didn't get them.
You say it wasn't in yours anyway?
No, see, I didn't.
One of yours, one of yours, Councilwoman Wiley, where you, on this, on this issue. What'd you think? I mean, can we wait?
Yeah, we can always wait if we ain't got no money.
You know I want it back.
That's budget one-on-one.
It's not, it's not.
You can patch it up, patch us some of them holes.
It, it's, 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 it, it. Yeah, we definitely need to just make sure that we're, security parking lots is the best route. Put in those areas where people can't park.
What I like is when you go out the parking lot and your car.
Yeah, you know it's an issue.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I don't think we know we're gonna.
So when you say something, then what? Fifty? I mean.
Didn't he say he could do it for eighty?
That's like the whole city, you just been kicking it, kicking it, kicking it, kicking it, kicking it.
We gotta find a way to. We need a printing press.
Grow a tree, plenty tree. So Councilwoman Wiley said, uh, you said you can do it for eighty thousand?
Now, is this with actual cement, or we talking rubber and foam? It's gonna be something that'll hold a car, right? Are the people who put it in still living? Can we sue them? No.
Exactly right, like, where we, I don't know.
Mr. Mayor, sir, just out of curiosity, um, going forward with repairs, how often should the parking lot be, uh, I guess, refreshed, like, when they re-search, resurface, let me put it that way, how often? Like, every ten years, fifteen years?
You talking about on asphalt?
Yeah, or, or, yeah.
Oh, on a good concrete road, you can get thirty to forty years.
On asphalt.
On asphalt, you probably ten, ten to fifteen years. He moved over here in two thousand, what year, seven?
Seven.
Right, April, April seventeen, two thousand seven, so it's fourteen, it's fifteen years old, it's never this used.
Did they even redo that parking lot when you first?
It's in the county deal something, but it didn't, but he did was.
Did you say that Mr. McConney did something?
Yes, I did, sir. He did something.
Oh, yes, so nothing was done, all right. So, so eighty from one sixty, that leaves us eighty, I mean, we not through all.
I can't, I threw that number at you because inflation, oh, because shot materials up so high. I just gotta take that into consideration, what we would have paid for last year, it's gone. I would say they last year, but what did I put it in last year, Mr. Mayor, seventy-five thousand? It was less than a hundred.
Yeah, for sure, yes. But here's the caveat, guys, we said that once we got down to it, and we put this out in the general public, that we would look at speed bumps as well, even though we got the one coming in. So can we, let me ask you this, because this is the budget now, right? So we can't technically start to put in and install that we just won't get the money till October?
No.
We gotta wait till October. To begin.
I gotta beat that out, because it's all state.
So, yeah, so you ain't even know, probably even, that's not even gonna be until March.
Yeah.
Oh, we gonna try to put them in this winter, we gonna try to put those in this winter.
Uh, Steve, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Congressman, did you have some?
Yeah, I was gonna say, just as far as, I know we debating on what we should do based off what the bottom line is, because we not all the way through the budget yet. So it's, uh, another Russian roulette thing, gonna say, let's at least, uh, hit that amount that he, the Director Bivens gave is a hundred and thirty-two thousand, with a percentage of that, just to put something in there so we can work towards it. And then, once we get to the, I guess you could say, end of the budget, we could go back to certain areas where we might need to readjust, or we can readjust. Because we may get somewhere down in the budget and say, well, we gotta go back and zero it out completely now. And just have everybody park on the street and build a temporary sidewalk to save you.
That's real talk.
We can't spend a dollar extra.
That's it, bro, that's that part.
Yeah, we can't.
You can't afford to spend any money.
Okay, so that hundred thousand dollars from, um, DTE, where is that sitting at in last year's budget?
It just came in as. Came in as revenue. Kind of that, we, that's, that's, that actually helps us. No, we ain't do no property sales, man, we the miss.
We need revenue, we need business to come in here.
Absolutely, it's coming.
Real business, not, you know, real business.
It's coming, but one thing I can say, it is coming, believe me, but it's gonna take time. We gotta weather.
Oh, yeah, wanna revisit this again next year?
No, man, we just sent a player, we let with it.
We don't want somebody to fall in our parking lot.
We can have this whole talk about it for twenty minutes on television.
Right, right, we gotta get it, we gotta get that.
Definitely gotta put, put the eighty in there.
Yeah. Put the eighty in there? Oh, Lord have mercy.
Realize we're gonna have to go another deficit elimination plan.
Yep, I do.
Everybody realize that right off, I mean, that's.
Okay, so now, that doesn't include, I mean, getting off the subject, that doesn't include any of our budget amendments that was not budgeted for last year that's gonna hit us too, because we haven't gotten it yet.
Right, well, you talking about your audit, is that what you're talking about?
Budget amendments.
Oh, that's already done, it's here, it's here now.
Budget amendment is here?
That's all in here, that's, that's what Mr. Green's been going off of. You amended, you got the requested.
No, 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 not this, no, I'm talking about for last year budget when, if we went over, and we wasn't budgeted for. So we still haven't gotten that.
But she's saying, Mr. Mayor, we did a first quarter, or we did a first quarter budget amendment.
And we have not done any.
She asked you, do you have a third quarter?
Yeah, another budget amendment coming.
There you go, Mr. Green.
And I can answer that, I have some.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, we should have some, because I know some people.
Fund budget, out of my, right, yeah, I do.
Yeah, but even in the general fund, from the budget to actuals, some, uh, line items were over, so we should be having that.
I mean, I have a budget amendment coming for the general fund this morning, that's where they root over at the Justice Center. Because it's leaking.
Yeah, we tried to, what we tried to do, based off of, those amendments, remember we said we need real numbers, a real actual. People shouldn't just be putting in numbers or asking for stuff, like, we tried to keep that really, really tight. So Mr. Green sent out that green and that yellow, showing the overages and all that stuff.
And that's.
We adjusted to this.
Right.
From what you seen before you now.
Okay, so you adjusted it, so.
You follow me? So everything that you in now, you're getting activity as of that date, so this is true numbers that we're looking at versus amended or requested. You know what I mean? But we're looking at three different things right now. Looking at activity, you're looking at requested, and you're looking at proposed, and that's what we're talking about now. And if I'm saying something wrong, guys, please help.
But I think when Mayor Proton.
That's not what I'm talking about.
But she's asking it, in the course of our year, which is FY twenty-two budget right now, right? We have budget amendments because we spent some time on an emergency basis or somewhere, the money's not being budgeted. We had to break it before they even get it approved.
Yeah, you the only one done that.
I do, I'm for sure.
You're the only one.
And that's what she, she asking, uh, and I said, I have one for the police station, for their roof. I have the water main break we just did in there, and I have a AC unit for my bill, my AC went out. So I have, I have three budget amendments for this quarter, that Maya sent over to you. Then I have Maya send, the mayor, the treasurer, Plan Moran, last, last week.
So they'll come to us on the.
Yeah, and that's why budget amendments are very important, because it gives you actually what we really has spent, even though our revenue expenditure reports sometimes have the correct numbers because it's not reporting salaries. But the budget amendment is, is gonna let you know really what you really, really spent for that prior year. So if we budgeted for a hundred thousand dollars for something, and it came in as a hundred and fifty thousand, and we don't have a budget amendment, we don't know we had, went over.
Right, for sure.
It's only in these expenditure reports, and we do see that we had some of the, some of the, some of the expenditures were over.
Right.
I can address that for you, Mayor Proton, because we've been instructed by the mayor, when we have a budget amendment, you do exactly what I just did. We get the paperwork, we submit it on the budget amendment form to the treasurer, to the mayor, Plan Moran. So the department here should, as soon as they have that amendment, it should go to them.
But then this should come to us, why isn't that coming to us?
Yeah, so it will come to you.
I mean, right, right, but why, I mean, you know, because that's what we, I mean, not being funny, but that's what we used to see under previous, since I've been here, since I've been on council.
For sure, but I'm saying, though, you haven't had a lot of those, and if you have, you gotta point them out to me, because I ain't seen them.
Okay.
You know, based off of what Mr. Bivens is telling me, and you guys have been on me as it relates to the budget now.
Let me just clear something up, a budget amendment is just saying, I wanna change what I said I'm gonna spend. I wanna change what I said was gonna come in, that's all that is, your activity is there. Regardless of the budget amendments or not, if you look at the activity, that's gonna tell you the story. That's what's happening.
That's what you basing that off of, but a, at the same time, and, and I get what Mayor Proton is saying, and Mr. Bivens is saying, I appreciate the explanation, that if we budgeted a hundred thousand, we go over a hundred and twenty thousand, it should be coming to the council for approval.
Right, because it's gonna take our bottom line item, it's gonna take, it's gonna throw off our bottom, bottom line, uh, budget because of that. That's why we get those, that's why it's very important that we get those.
Yes, ma'am.
Because if those off our bottom budget line for FY twenty twenty-two.
Correct.
So which means we're gonna be more, and we're coming in to FY twenty-three with a deficit that we didn't know we had, because we didn't have those budget amendments.
Yeah, according, according, yeah, yeah, accord, according to the actual.
Your activity.
Based off the activity, see, the budget amendment is gonna tell you, well, this is what we planned, and then you'll be able to look at the activity and see if you went over or under. What you amended it for, but the actual activity, that's gonna happen, whether we do the budget amendments or not. And at the end of the day, you're gonna either, you're gonna have revenues, you're gonna have expenditures. And it's gonna be, how much revenues did you have over your expenditure? And then you compare that to what your original budget was, and compare that to what your amended budget was. But the truth is in the activity.
But sometimes the activity is not incorrect, because if you don't plug in those numbers, per se, for salary and overtime.
That's in there.
No, no, but I'm just saying, sometimes it was not in there, remember we had said, and you said, some of those.
Rectify that, that's because we went to DM payroll, but we rectified that.
And, and, you know, and I'm hoping that they're up to date, but some of that, but still, some of that stuff can get us in trouble, is what I'm saying. And that's where we really need to have that.
I've, I've said to our departments, have no amendments.
Right, 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 because like overtime, I mean, just like during COVID last, you know, we didn't budget for all of the overtime that we got. But in, we ended up getting some money to help us out, but in the end, it took our number down, that we thought, what we thought. So that's why municipality have budget amendments during the year. So you can be on top of that, you know, even though you giving us the budget to actual, we still need to say, we approve this, you know, uh.
Anytime an amendment comes up, I think we, it comes to you for approval.
Right, but we haven't got, we haven't.
We haven't had any.
We only have one, and each budget.
Sent them to me last week.
I mean, you can look in our old budget books, because I know you, you knew, but each budget book that we have, it has explanation in there. It tells us what our revenues was that we didn't perceive, and it shows what our expenditures was that we didn't foresee. So that way, we have our checks and balances, like, like that hundred thousand dollars that we got in from DTE. That would have been put in there for revenues that we did not foresee.
That's right.
Versus going down to our expenditures, and then that way, we all can, you know, this, if you have time, I know you doing budget, but all our budget books have that was in, it has.
I like that, though, because that actually shows more, like you saying.
Yeah.
On one little lymph sheet, it basically said.
Budget books, because I know we have them in our old budget books where, you know, the.
I like that, I need that.
Yeah.
Make sure you send that to me and Mr. Green.
Okay, and I found one, okay.
Okay, good, okay, Mr. Green, see.
Okay, then going, moving down to, uh, lease payments, um, that's at sixty-five thousand, one hundred, that's gonna remain the same. There was nothing put in there for lease payment capital projects, but I put five thousand in there because there was forty-nine hundred activity this year and fifty-four thousand of activity last year. Can you explain that, uh? Can you explain that, uh?
That lease, does the lease count?
Can you explain that for everybody so we all on same page, because I know that is.
So we did a lighting project in the city of Easton, you guys remember with DTE, we did two phases of that. But we changed the lights over to LED, and that fifty-four thousand was the final payment to DTE.
Okay.
Like, so we paid that off.
All right.
So we have, if we do another. Project that affects the whole city, say if we do another lighting project, it would come out of that account. And right now I have nothing in there.
Okay.
That's recommended.
So you don't necessarily need that, Mr. Green.
Okay.
You can take that out.
All right. Okay, then we got sixty thousand, now we moved to city attorney, that's it for building maintenance.
Hmm, we probably won't get to that, we got one more day, we already know, I already told everybody, that's a good thing, we're gonna have one more day of this.
A whole day for him.
I already know that already, this one says, so we trying to get through, we trying to get all the way up at least the prayer. We got police here.
Okay, city attorney, sixty thousand was rec- requested, we got sixty thousand in there recommended. Uh, legal fees, we've got um, three hundred and fifty thousand was.
Girl, help, help me real quick, I'm just, and, and I apologize, guys, I don't want to waste too much time, okay, you got a hundred and fifty-one thousand, that was last year.
That was last year, yep.
And then seventy-two was amended.
That was the budget for this year, but you only spent uh fifty-six nineteen.
Okay. So in the flat rate for the attorney, is this all the attorney fees in one?
Isn't that Dave? That should be.
What is the?
That's David Jones, the sixty thousand, is that five thousand a month? It's five thousand a month for David Jones? Sixty thousand, five thousand a month, five times twelve.
Different than the legal?
Is, isn't it?
Sixty?
No, I thought he was talking about the flat fee.
The flat fee is six thousand?
Right.
Six.
So it should be seventy-two.
Seventy-two thousand.
That's what I'm trying to make sure, that's what I was like, why you got it to be sixty, it should be seventy-two.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Uh, let's see.
And that's the contracted number, Mr. Green, so you can't get away with that.
Okay, and then we've got these legal fees. Now the legal fees are, it was two hundred and forty thousand in legal fees last year. Four hundred and thirty-one thousand activity this year, I've got three fifty in there. For requested and recommended, if I drill down on the four thirty-one, then it has um. Professional and consultant fees. See who, Allen Brothers. Those Allen Brothers, I'm just pulling up all the different ones, see who we pay, Allen Brothers. It looks like it's all, all Allen Brothers. So.
With the three fifty?
Yep.
That's all Allen Brothers.
So is that what we, Mr. Chairman, sorry? So, the legal fees, is this what we owe them as of today?
No, it's not owed, this, no, that's what's been spent, not owed.
Okay.
And then you also have some Smith appellate law firm, yeah.
So wouldn't this figure be um maybe? Okay, we, last year was at two forty, but we really, that's an estimated guess on what we're gonna spend.
Yeah, exactly.
Depending on our lawsuits.
Right, so that's why I just.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, that's why I put it in between the two, the two forty and the four thirty-one.
So what you put the end figure in?
Three fifty. Yep.
I mean, if we don't go over, that's still money that we can use somewhere else.
Yeah.
Depending on if we not gonna, we don't have anymore, if there's new, you know, new, you know, we don't have any more lawsuits.
Yep, so, I just did, put the three fifty in there, now I don't have. Anything under settlements down here, eight oh seven, we had settlements this year, we didn't have any settlements last year. And I don't have any in for next year either. Is that, and that is, that is the McGill, so is that done?
You talking about the six fifty?
No, not the six fifty, the three ninety-five five hundred.
The activity?
I think that, I think that one might be.
Probably gonna be a little bit more because you just had another one.
Right. We got, we finished in June.
Yeah. You may even wanna add that in there.
For the McGill, for that particular window?
I don't know.
Oh, no. You know what I mean? That's a good one right there.
Our activity ends what, June thirtieth, so we might have some more, well, you know what, call the city attorney.
Yeah, I will.
Then.
Ask him about.
See what the number should be.
Okay.
Yeah, but make sure it's in the six thousand dollar bracket.
Please, Mr. Bivens. Okay. Okay.
The settlement for the wood.
Okay, but it'll be taxed. We won't necessarily come out of here, so.
Okay.
I mean, it's a bad thing, but.
All right.
Okay.
Okay, uh, then the next.
What's the six fifty, Mr. Green?
Uh, that's the Greg, Gregola settlement.
So Mr., Mr., the attorney told you to put that in there for next?
Yeah, that was it, that, Plamaran.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So, I mean, I, again, I'll confirm that with David as well. Uh, it says a tax, let me see, you got judgment levy for a big payment, one hundred and fifty-one thousand, Feiger Law Firm.
Yeah, we know what that one is.
All right, so we good on that?
Yeah, remember we said. Yeah, uh, we, we gonna, we just have one question from.
Oh, okay.
I don't know if it's one question, but it's questions.
Oh, okay, no, I was just asking, was this a million dollars, and I, we are not still ready to go out far if he, just to see.
Oh, I totally agree with that, you talking about on the attorney, you talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, time. Been talking about. Yeah, you, we've been talking about it, it's up to you, I, I, if I had a vote. Try to put it on the floor.
Yes, but you have influence.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm waiting, I'll wait for you.
And we have a, a Nelson levy. Um, but the next one that was, we had forty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven thousand of activity. For uh the judgment levy, Nelson. So I need to speak with, uh, because there's nothing in here for requested. For next year, so I'll speak with David Jones and make sure that that's accurate as well. So we'll just leave that in there for now until I speak with him.
Uh, we did hit Personnel Department last time, but Councilwoman Wiley had a question.
Okay.
Or comment, go ahead, Councilwoman Wiley.
It was, it was in reference to the um, the, the, the. Twelve thousand dollar raise. Or HR?
HR Director?
Yeah, HR Director, um, how long has she been here, has it been a year?
No, but this is not just for, it's, it wasn't again, like I explained, um, before, it's not about the person, it's the actual position itself.
Yeah, well, I understand that, but this, this position had a, a salary attached to it.
Right.
Originally, right, and it was less than the twelve.
Yeah, and I couldn't keep, and I couldn't keep anybody or get.
Okay, we understand all of that too, but we've been sitting here bemoaning the fact that we have no money.
Right.
And how comparable is this request with other employees? Is this the same type, because this seems to be like about a twelve percent rate, or something of that nature?
I believe the HR department's always been low.
It's, that's fine for your beliefs. That's fine for your beliefs, but we still, we still are in a financial bind here.
Yeah.
And two, in um, like I said, is this comparable with what other department here is, are at?
Not necessarily accident, I think other department is.
Or that you are allowing, I mean, what's the percentage of?
Even allowing, I mean, if, you know.
What is the percentage of raises you're giving to other employees?
Not necessarily percentage to other employees, this doesn't have anything that, again, to do with other employees or.
It has everything to do with other employees, because this type of thing creates a toxic environment.
Yeah, well, that's not what we're trying to create.
And also, if.
And I think it's not creating that action.
If we have this type of money, I mean, I'm getting ready to lose ALS. In the fire department, I don't have enough police to do what I need to do, so if I'm going to give out exorbitant amounts of money. I would give it to the first responders, because it's gonna be really difficult for me to explain to the constituents. Why they don't have this service or that service, but we got a heck of a department.
Yeah, HR Department.
Yeah.
Take care of all of our personnel stuff and all of our insurance.
That's, that's fine, but this job had a. I'm just saying that this is exorbitant, and I'll just be flat out with you, it's a deal breaker for me. As far as this budget is concerned, because it doesn't seem, it's not fair, okay? And I was, we were given statistics, national averages and things of that nature, but.
Not national, it was local.
Okay, well, okay, you would give it, she said national, but we'll, we'll, we'll go, we'll go with local. But even if you're going with local, there was no mention of the medium. Of fund balances or economic incomes of these cities who are giving that kind of money to HR, we're not among them.
Yeah, but again, this city as it relates to HR, unfortunately, for years have been lacking, just because.
I understand.
Because we haven't taken a serious look at how much we're paying our personnel as relates to quality service. So that, that's where I'm at with it.
I understand that, I understand, and I would give everybody tons of money if I had it, but I don't. That's the problem.
Yeah, and, and I'm gonna to, I'm gonna tell you like this, I think that every department here that adheres is, is working, and actually deserves every penny that they're getting.
Of course.
And that they're all.
And if we had that type of money to give out.
Uh, egregiously underpaid, so when you're talking about uh fifty thousand dollars for a person to.
What's, what is, what will the HR salary be with that twelve thousand dollars?
Well, sixty thou, it was sixty thousand, so you're talking about adding a twelve thousand dollars.
Seventy-two thousand dollars, Mr. Bivens, how much you make? What's your base?
Go ahead and throw Mr. Bivens in, because he's gotten a couple of raises since.
Is it over a hundred thousand dollars? Okay, I mean, I'm just saying that this to me. The reason I'm bringing it up, if I have this kind of money to give to a department, I will give it to police, I will give it to fire.
We got some, we got, we gave police some money, and we gave. I don't need, no, you can speak, go ahead. Talk to the mic.
You ask me, I mean, but if we don't pay people, we lose people. We keep, we, since I've been here, you looking at key positions in the city with rapid turnover. HR, we gotta quit having rapid turnovers, because that's all our information, our insurance gets screwed up. And in, it costs the city because we don't have nobody here representing us.
I'm saying that this is just exorbitant.
I not said that it's not.
It is, so we, no, but I, like I said, I'm not voting for a budget that includes it.
That's fine, that's fine.
Because it's uh, like you're sitting here and you're saying that, but. You, we just sit here and bemoan the fact that we ain't got money for this, we ain't got money for that, we ain't got money for this, but we have money for that.
We have the certain things that we have to do.
I think the mayor made a key point, even when he was talking about the parking lot, if you keep on kicking a can down the road, what do you have at the end? You don't have nothing.
And you're saying that to pay, to get, to get the people to stay, you have to pay them. You're here, are you a good person, how long have you been here?
Since I've been here, I've given Mr. Bivens.
And, and I, huh, and this is what I'm saying, I mean, I would think that this same. Employment or the same good people, like, would stay. Until we are able to pay them. Something of that nature, you're talking about increasing revenues and things of that nature, this is not money we have right now. And I'm reluctant to spend it, because I wanna, I want you all to tell me how I go about telling the residents. No, no paramedic is coming to your house to save your child.
But that's not the case. The fire department?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm firing for effect right now, Mr. The Mayor, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to get people excited about the fact that. This, because nobody, I mean, I will not be able to get the HR to come to my house if somebody breaking in. Him, I can call.
Yeah, but that's why we give the police a five percent increase.
It's a five, it's not three?
Five percent, that we tried to increase.
Didn't you send out something where it was three percent the other day?
For ten, like we talked about, they've asked for ten, I said seven point five. And we got to the, the um, the pension piece where it was like three hundred thousand that increased because of the actuary, so I took it down to three. And then I talked to our chief, and our chief said, listen, we need to at least give our folks five percent, they haven't have a raise in what, thirteen years, chief? So, so as we're talking about it, getting down to it, we've been, when I say that we've been doing our community a disservice. Because we continue to pay people. Way under the average.
Does that make? What would that make the hourly wage for police?
You got twenty-one seventy-five that they'll be coming in starting that, we said, and then the guys is there now what they'll be at. Uh, Councilwoman Wiley, it would be uh, for beginning July. First, twenty twenty-two would be twenty-one seventy-five uh for a new officer and twenty-eight, twenty-seven an hour for. Uh, top A officer.
Okay, but this other thing would be thirty-five dollars an hour, right? I think, I think the, the thing I heard, okay, I rest.
I get it, I mean, everybody, that's what we're here for, go ahead, question? Well, again, I mean, it's just like everybody else, any other department can come in nice for rate. You know, we don't do cost, it's not a cost of living increase or three percent every year, or, you know what I mean? It's just what it is, yeah, exactly, so it's, it's what it is. Right, I totally understand what you're saying, but see, it was so low, it was so low, as HR Director. That, that number was so low, that, you know, you, you couldn't even really get good people. And the good people that you got, it was so much work to be done, you know, so that's why I came to you guys and said, hey, let's take it to sixty at least. And the person that I had here, I thought that she was gonna stay, and she was just like, Mayor, I can't even take no more, I don't even wanna wait to the new budget, I know what the council don't say. So, as it relates to comparables, to communities that's our size, that's around us, it's about eighty thousand. Really, so we're saying, hey, we can afford seventy-two. So it could go up to, you know, overtime, eighty, but it would be up to this body, so we can be on average. Like the average police officer, like right now with those raises, that put us up in what, the middle somewhere? Exactly, so that's kinda what's happening with this. It'll put us up like our, the midpoint. Oh, yeah, for sure, I mean, I, I wish, at least.
But just like.
And, uh, like, in other departments, I don't know. Like, do the same thing, in regards to, I already wanna have it where it's capped off for a while and then raised up?
Yeah. Yeah, most of those departments are already there though, already. They're not grossly underpaid, you know? I'm not paying the, the, the DPS director fifty thousand dollars to do DPW. I'm not paying the police chief fifty thousand dollars to do, we're talking about the heart of our organization. Where, when I say that, since uh, Zara has been here as it relates to the, the structure of HR, what we put together with uh, Walter helping and uh, Safe Health, we've identified at least thirty thousand dollars. And monies has been sitting out there that we haven't captured because we haven't had people just on top of it or knew what they were doing. We gotta have the best talent and only get the best talent, you gotta pay people. And in this position, it's, we've had, you guys all agree with me, I don't know what has changed as it relates to, we're looking at the person, this is not about the person. If she decides to not be here today, I'm still saying we have to make HR director at least seventy five thousand. So seventy two thousand, but I just think that she's the best person, that she's proven that. She's excellent. So, at any rate, that's my soapbox.
We've been over this a long time ago, even when the first one was here, we'd been through so many and I for one have been hollering that you can pay some more money. But I think the big jump may be the seventy two thousand, I think if there was a, you know, seven, eight thousand dollar raise, or if the person was brought in making a dollar amount, I think that none of this probably, we would be having this conversation right now, so.
Got you, got you, got you. You guys can just blame me for the way that it was done, then I'll take that. At the same time, I just knew that's what needed to have happened. And continue on down the path, we'd been doing this three years. I first came in at HR. You know, I mean Gina, Gina, Gina was, she had just graduated from school and she was making fifty one thousand. She would have found another job. When I told her I couldn't give her no more money. That's, that's what happened. And she'll tell you that's the reality. She told me she'll come back, give her twenty thousand. It was like I was being, you know, like, you know, extorted. We gotta pay people in order to keep people. And we know that our people are still paid low. We need to get them up. We need to get all of them up.
That's why we need business in here, so we can pay our people.
That's right. And let me say this, because it's just like Mr. Bivens was saying, as it relates to having, um, you know, June being compliance. We have to have people in place. We can't run these skeleton crews and expect to get money in when we don't have people out here doing the work. We have vacant properties right now, we're running water in vacant properties, because we don't have enough people checking. So how much money is going down the drain? Literally, literally going down the drain. It's just one thing. So it's those things, like if we had more police, we can do a traffic detail.
Yeah, cause we don't have no traffic revenue company.
Sit on the corners of Michigan Avenue, right here, all day, sit here, right here all day.
That's money to be made.
Come on.
Yeah, that's money to be made.
But of course, it takes money to make money. So we need more people. I need at least six more officers, and I ain't talking about a grant, I'm talking about paying them. That's the type of stuff that I'm on. I mean, it is just what it is, but at the same time, we have to have people in here checking the boxes too. You have to. We have no policies, no procedures in place. I mean, this place is, it, it's tough, but we're getting there with the right people. Gotta have the right people and talent in play, and we have it. I'm, I'm one hundred percent, I believe that. I'm standing on that, so I get it. I want your support for this budget. I know it's gonna be tough, especially now, especially with what we're talking about with, you know, the, the, the infrastructure at the city hall with the, the parking lot and what's happening with that, I mean, you know, that just busted my brain today. That's a hundred, I mean, eighty thousand dollars that we gotta spend.
Oh, I ain't spending that.
What are we doing? Picking and choosing?
I wouldn't spend nothing on that. You're saying? The overall, I mean, you gotta look at the bottom line overall.
I truly believe that.
I mean, I'm talking about being in the black.
No doubt. You know where I wanna be.
So I wouldn't, I wouldn't need no money on that.
Okay, just to clarify, I'm saying, I'm not saying raises and warranties, I'm saying this amount.
Got you. Yep. Okay. All right then, guys, let's uh, we know that we went over the personnel department. Those are, those, those uh, comments are noted. Let's just gonna jump into police, and then after police, we're gonna call it a wrap. Okay? Appreciate your patience, and thank you, chief, for your patience. Let's go with it.
Okay, so with police, uh, we did uh, two to five percent increase. And so for salaries, you will see, you should have uh, two million ninety two thousand seven fifty five. That's the number that should go into recommended, two million zero nine two seven five five. Two million ninety two thousand seven hundred and fifty five. That's gonna be for permanent salary. Uh, there was a request for fifteen thousand four hundred for temporary salaries, and we have that in the recommended as well. There's a request for three hundred thousand for overtime. We have that in our recommended as well.
Now let's see here, you, you got the activity at three seventy eight, is that what's happening right now?
No, overtime activity right now is four twenty five. The chief put in three hundred thousand for requested, and that's what was recommended.
That's gonna be a budget amendment. So that was a good point right there. That is definitely a budget amendment as it relates to, again, um, what was requested or spent last year, what was that, three twenty five?
Three twenty five was budget for last year.
So you're actually over a hundred thousand, so we need an amendment for that.
Some of that was uh, if I may, some, some of that was the uh, the COVID overtime that uh.
Oh, that we took in that grant and that, okay.
So some of that grant should cover that, right? So it'll wash out on that, but it's still.
But still, it's a good example.
Right, it's a good example, yeah.
Our average overtime uh, over the last few years has been in the area between three twenty five and, and three sixty five. Uh, it, it's bounced around. Uh, with the changes that we've asked to put forth in the police department's budget, um, there's actually a mistake here, um, that I just caught, uh, it indicates that uh, uh, based on one of the salary changes, um, overtime personnel, if requested, changes to IPD structure, I put in, the number should decrease this budget. Uh, I had an admin lieutenant that was uh, on track to make thirty six thousand dollars in a year of overtime.
Right.
Between July and January, he made eighteen. We had January to July to go. Uh, that person has since retired. Uh, or, or is using their time in order to retire at this point, they'll be out July first. Um, that position will save me thirty six thousand dollars out of my overtime, so that's why I'm at thirty thousand. What, the changes that I'm asking this body to approve in my budget will allow me to come in at three hundred thousand. Uh, the other issue was, uh, and the treasurer and I discovered it after going through, uh, as, as he says, drilling down through the past budget, and what was happening was that court overtime was not being charged to the court overtime GL. So somehow it got, somehow it got mixed up with the, uh, with the hours uh, in payroll. And it was not being charged out of that budget, so court overtime also came out of that budget, that, that initial regular overtime budget, should not have happened, should have come out of the, the court overtime budget. Uh, which is not a tremendously high amount, but it should go where, where it's supposed to go in the budget. It should go where you all approve it to go from. And, and so, uh, we've worked on that and figured out, kinda drilled down and figured out what exactly was going on with that, and we've got that figured out at this point, uh, how to make sure that that doesn't happen in the future.
Correct.
With, with the help of Walter and everybody else, so.
So, Mr. Chief.
Please go ahead, Mayor.
So with COVID going up high, numbers are going back up, um, hopefully it won't get to where it was before, where overtime is gonna really drain us. I mean, because, you know, if they get the call, they gotta go.
That's right.
You know what I'm saying? So that's, that's really, really, you know, it's up in the air, it's estimated, estimated guess, and we hope that it stays right here, but duty call, you know, if, oh, if the numbers go up high, that's gonna be fires overtime down. You know?
I agree. Are you saying to move it up or?
No, well, no, I mean, we can keep it the same, but this, you know, make sure, you know, that we, we monitor that, because that's gonna be a factor too, because our numbers are all going up. And people are requiring a mask. I know I have to wear my mask again at work. So, um, just have to be looking out for those too, and you know.
I agree. I know Chief has been dealing with that with personnel and that, so.
Yeah.
Definitely, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, please.
Uh, question in regards to the five percent increase in salaries and the, I guess you could say, um, the raise or retain, retention. Uh, so Chief, do you believe that that would have a positive impact, where it would decrease overtime in the future with more manpower?
Oh, there's no question about it. I think that uh, first and foremost, retention of the officers has been a problem. As you know, they, they come here, they get hired here, and then the next thing you know, they find someplace else that's paying five dollars more an hour and they're out the door. Uh, that, that is not only an issue for salaries, uh, and this is something that Councilwoman Watley had talked about uh, in prior years and, and the mayor pro tem, we both talked about, we've all talked about this. It cost me a lot of money to equip these officers when they come in. A lot of this stuff is custom, their uniforms are custom, their, their vests are custom. So we're talking seven to ten thousand dollars per officer out of my uh, uh, out of my um, supply budget as well, not just salaries and overtime. So it hits me all the way around when it comes to retention of officers. So yes, this five percent uh, is, to me is detrimental. I mean, I've got people working sixteen, eighteen hour days right now. Uh, because that's all they're allowed to work. It, it, it's, it's, it's really, really difficult for them to continue to come back every day, every day, every day, every day without the, the rest, without the, 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 you know, the recuperation periods that they need between their shifts. It's just, it, it, it is outrageous that, that they have to work like this. However, we all understand how it got like this, we all understand why we're in this position, and we all understand that we have to be fiscally responsible and get us out of it. And, and so in looking at this budget, there, there are so many things that, that come along with this contract, um, the, the, the contract that has been proposed and what the mayor and, and treasurer has worked towards with the grant covering the initial uh, increases in salary for the first few, uh, first uh, six, first new hirees, uh, for six officers of, you know, new hirees. Taking that up to twenty one seventy five puts us smack in the middle of this area's hiring.
Where you at now, chief?
We're at the bottom.
What's the number? Sixteen?
I'll tell you exactly where we're at. Uh, starting pay right now for, for a police officer uh, is sixteen sixty nine.
That, was that put in, was that when we had the deficit elimination plan?
Uh, it, it's up a dollar sixty nine from that.
Yeah, yeah, okay, cause I, I knew it was low when we had.
Big raise there.
Uh, it was fifteen part time.
Right, right.
Fifteen, you can see what that got us, one point sixty dollars later.
Yeah.
That's something we don't talk about. And you know, I know, you know, Brian is coming, Brian, did he send out the email to everybody? He sent out the email. Okay, so Brian is coming and we know it, it's what he's going to say. You know, I mean, it's just what it is, cut, cut, cut. But we live and work in this community. So we have to get creative. We have to figure out the revenue. We got property sitting around, we just got dilapidated buildings sitting around. Everybody should be energized in their corner, in their area, figuring out how we can get people motivated, getting them into like Mayor Pro Tim Howard said, into these businesses, getting and increasing revenue. We, we have to, that's the only way, and that's what's saving us now. Property sales. We do three hundred some odd thousand property sales last year, we would really be looking tough, living in a, in a terrible situation. Plus the residual taxes that we're gonna increase.
That's what I said, that, that bottom line needs to be in the black right there.
Yeah, yeah, no doubt, I'm telling you, I get it, I get it. But I would rather, again, give it to our people that's working hard, that's, that's quality people, these people. When I say they give they all to our community, I see it. I'm out here, I see you guys out here. I know you guys see what our officers are doing, I know y'all seeing what our people, our, our personnel are doing. You know, when you give to people, they gonna give you more. So we gonna get more in the long run, we gonna be skinny. But like Chief is saying, we have to be fiscally responsible. We haven't been. We gotta check everything. We have to. I'm okay with this. I wanna do this with you guys often. Every three months, we should be doing it. Because it's just what it is at the end of the day. But we got to raise our revenues. That's the bottom line, we can't keep cutting. And Brian coming, he gonna say it, he told me today, it is what it is. He coming with the gloom and the doom. However, I know that if we do what we're proposing to do with this budget, and we stick to it, our people are gonna be better for it, and you will see it. I guarantee you that.
And, and on that note, Mr. Mayor, um, spending. You know, if it's not a dire, I mean, we really, I mean, if it's not, I mean, I know, I know things is gonna happen, but just to go out and just spend because we can, that has to stop.
No, I agree.
I mean, we really have to stop. Another thing I was thinking too, you know, um, the city of Dearborn, Dearborn Heights, is they are booming down here. What is in own for role? What is it that they're getting that we're not getting?
Yeah.
Where we have developers, you know, we got Easter high, for real. I mean, the, the, the property, you know, let's get, let's get somebody that just wanna build brownstone, you know, with so, something that all of us can prosper is from. This is what we need. You know, we don't need businesses to come in to make money for them, or, okay, we gonna get the tax revenue. It's time for us to share with our residents.
Yeah.
You know, we shouldn't have to go outside of our residence, outside our city for everything that we need, because we don't have it. You know, Michigan Avenue is booming, you know, people coming in here and not, to knock people with marijuana. But you got this kind of money, okay, build us something, build us a coffee house or something where we all can prosper. To stay in our city, but so far we have not seen that.
Yeah. That's because we haven't mandated it. Now, know that this administration is mandating that. And we're focused on that, and we're, what you're talking about, those same developers, we're talking to them, hey man, what's going on over there? Can you do it over here? So, you know, it's just about the traction, but, but two, you know, Mayor Pro Timmy, you, you know this, I, unfortunately, you know, people have a perception of Easter.
They have a perception of Detroit, and look at that. They, I mean, you know what I'm saying, just take one apple to come in here, a leap of faith to come in here to do something.
I agree.
Because the city of Detroit had the same kind of rapers we had, and look what they doing downtown, you know what I'm saying? We just need.
Some people call it gentrification, so we wanna.
Oh, yeah, we don't wanna do that, but I mean, but.
At the same time, at the same time, I told you, I agree one hundred percent, you know, I agree one hundred percent, and noted.
Developers just wanna build, um, right now they said, and just to get off the subject, right now they were saying something how they, um, wanna build for medium and low income. You know, we can have beautiful townhouses. You know, and look at the revenue that would come from it.
So it's, it's coming, Mayor Pro Tim, it's coming. Safe, I walked out the door, but I got them coming for you guys. You will see those RPs this week coming up. And, and, and we got real people that wanna do what you're talking about doing. So, that's the only thing that's gonna save us. But it'll be on that one little paper that we talked about at the end of the year, ones that we didn't expect to get.
Yeah.
I guarantee you it's gonna be.
I hope so, cause, hey, I don't think, I don't know, because of that. So when you said the deficit elimination plan, to hear talk about that, we, because we up under a certain percentage that we supposed to have in the general.
Correct. That's right. So the auditors with the audit, and it is, we did talk to them, they're just gonna be here, should be here the first of June, um, that, that's what they basically, they said the same thing, that we're saying as we're looking at our budget and our bottom line. You know, we gonna have to add a deficit elimination plan. It is what it is, you know? And, 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 but I believe again, if we do some strategic things as it relates to our strategic planning, property sales, development of those properties, overall, we'll be able to balance that out a little bit. It's gonna, it's gonna be alright. Okay, great. Finish, finish on up with the PD's call of the night.
Okay. All right, and then we had ten thousand five hundred for our court overtime. Um, and that's what the chief was talking about. We figured out that it was, hadn't been captured correctly, but going forward, we're gonna capture it in the correct, um, line item, so that's why he requested ten five, and we recommend ten five.
There's another point that I need to make here, if I can.
Please, go ahead.
So, one of the issues, uh, or one of, one of the, the things that previous chief started, uh, was uh, a traffic detail, officers could work overtime for a certain number of hours, it's usually four hour blocks. And they go out and they, they do traffic enforcement in areas where we get complaints from council and other residents in the mayor's office, and we target these places based on the number of crashes, all kinds of stuff goes into where we decide to work, but. All kinds of stuff goes into where we decide to work, but uh the officers are out here and they're doing it. The thing that the council doesn't see, and the thing that I haven't been able to see, has been where the revenue that is offsetting the overtime going into the general fund.
Hmm.
And I'll say this to you, the the previous court administrator had numerous requests from me to show me what was happening. We haven't received that. Uh I talked with the judge. The judge assured me that we would work through whatever we needed to work through to get these numbers. And now with the new court administrator, she's absolutely phenomenal.
Yeah.
She has, she has been willing to sit down with me and go over all of the numbers and talk about anything that you have to talk about. There's something to be said here about these numbers, because there are days where I know that that officers have written sixty or seventy tickets. One officer has wrote, written sixty or seventy tickets a day. What what is the financial impact on the general fund from those numbers, and how does that affect the overtime? And and that's something that I want to be able to show you all, so you can say, oh, well, this makes sense, as opposed to, oh, my God, we got four hundred thousand dollars in overtime. But if they're doing four hundred thousand dollars in overtime, they might be bringing in six hundred thousand dollars in revenue, because they're out there enforcing traffic laws and keeping our seat, our 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 streets safe.
So they just been throwing that into fines and.
We're trying to find out. We're 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 as confused as you are, and 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 think, you know, I have to say, uh Mr. Green, Mr. Green puts up with my phone calls, my fifteen phone calls at a time, because I'll get on to something, and I'll have another question, another question, and and he's been very helpful uh in in walking me through this process and trying to get down to what some of these numbers really are. Uh, and and so it's not the perfect budget from the PD. It's not the best budget in the world, I'm sure. But we've done what we can to cut, and some of the numbers that you have in the initial thing, BSNA wouldn't let me modify them the way that they should. So as we go through this, I'm gonna be throwing new numbers at Mr. Green as well. Fortunately, they're all going down instead of up, so I think that you'd be pleasantly surprised as we go through this, with some of these things.
I like to hear. Go ahead, Mr. Green.
All right. And so the next line item is our holiday pay. Um, chief had one thirty-two one in there. Um, I saw there was activity last year of about eighty-six, so I put one hundred in there. Um, so I don't know, chief, do you think I should take that up back up to one thirty-two or?
Well, I think that was based on the increase, the increased revenues.
Ten percent.
The increase with with the raises and everything, those those hours would add up a little bit more. Uh, a little bit more in holiday pay, because holiday pay is a hundred and four officers for the Teamsters, a hundred and four hours for Teamsters, and uh uh that that rate goes up a little bit um with with each one of those officers that get an increase, there'll be an increased expenditure, but uh I think that based on um activities and the minimum budget being one seventeen, four hundred last year, I still think one twenty should be the number there.
One. All right, so we'll put one hundred and twenty thousand in there for a holiday pay. Now, I don't want, you wanna get, you know, a little too excited, but I'm gonna do some more investigating, and if we've already captured the holiday pay in our regular salaries, then all that's going away. But I just need to confirm that. That may be the case. Okay, so just keep in mind, once I do my investigation, if we, if it finds out, if I find out that we've already captured the holiday pay in our permanent salaries, then we'll be eliminating all of these holidays in each department.
But isn't that some of that, um, isn't, isn't that, um, in the contract?
No, that's not what I'm saying, because we're in DM payroll now, right?
So with our payroll solution, there's one of all. And what he's saying is that it's not separated.
Oh, okay.
It's all in one.
So it'll be up on the permanent salary then?
Yeah. And we'll fix it going forward, but I hope it's broke now, because if it is, that means that's money that we can take out.
Wait to see that when you know. That'd be easy to take it out right now. Go ahead, man.
Okay. All right. So then we'll go uh down to the next line item, which is education allowance. And education allowance is, uh, there was nothing requested in here by the chief, but chief, I put twenty-five hundred in there for you. It's twenty-two hundred was spent last year. Is that okay, chief?
Yes, yes, that's uh, and and again, BSNA, we had issues with BSNA. We put this together that would not allow me to enter certain things, so that was one of the line items I could not enter. Twenty-five hundred for that.
Okay. Uh, the hazard pre- pay premium, I don't have anything in there for that. You didn't request anything. I.
That was the uh, the CARES Act fund or the uh COVID relief fund that came into that that came in to cover some of the overtime. So that thirty-seven thousand dollars actually could be uh, and that's twenty-twenty-one, this is uh twenty-one, twenty-two. Um, I'm not sure, but I, but I was advised previously that we're supposed to get some more funding for the overtime to to cover some of the overtime for this budget year. That hasn't happened yet. I'm just waiting to hear. So right now, we just status quo with that.
All right. And then next we have uh roll call preparation. Uh ninety-two hundred is requested. We got ninety-two hundred in there for recommended.
What is that?
Oh, that's where the supervisors uh prepare for roll call with the officers, the the fifteen minutes to send their contract prior, you know, prior to the uh the start of their shift, where they go over all of the oncoming issues in the city, all the things they gotta talk about, uh getting the uh uh detail ready for the day, all the stuff that they have to do prior to the shift. They have to show up early to get ready for the shift to start, so that's what that covers.
And that's contractual.
If that's, if that's the supervisors or the officers?
That's the ops, I mean, that's the supervisors.
It's the supervisors, are they salary or are they?
No, no, they're, they're the the COAM members are all hourly.
Okay, they are hourly?
Yeah. Yep.
Okay.
And as you explore down and we talk about what it is that I'm trying to do, you'll understand what's, what I, what what I'm trying to do. All right.
Okay.
Okay, and then the next line item was social security. The chief added fifty-four one in there. I put, took it up to seventy, because looking at our activity for this year, we had seventy-one thousand four seventy-one, and then last year was sixty-eight thousand, so I got seventy thousand for recommended for social security.
You said seventy-five. You had seventy?
Yeah, seventy thousand, yes.
That's what I had. It wouldn't allow me to change that one either. I have a whole list of them.
You wanna go down on that?
No, I think that's, that's fine.
Oh, okay.
All right. Uh, then group insurance, I have that three forty-two one hundred. Employee health contributions, those are gonna be subtraction, so we got the negative sixty-eight five. And then for employee dental contributions, I just put a negative ten thousand. It was, this year it was twenty-one thousand for contributions. Last year it was only seven thousand. You know, I just only put a negative ten thousand right now. That helps us, you know, if we do get more contributions from our employees, that'll help us. But I just want to be conservative with that. For the pension, uh, we're looking at about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and that's after speaking with um Plant Moran. So I know it says a one million thirteen thousand seven hundred in the requested. Chief, can you explain how you got that in the requested? That number?
Uh, the pension number, that's something that uh Plant Moran did.
Okay, yeah, so I spoke with him later and we adjusted it. So that's seven fifty is the correct number, so it should be seven hundred and fifty thousand for pension. The uh clothing allowance, there's nothing in there, because we figured out, uh, the chief and I, that the gun allowance and the equipment allowance was being uh coded and generalized as clothing allowance, so that's why you see a hundred and thirty-four thousand of clothing allowance, uh, which there shouldn't have been any clothing allowance. That's, that's the gun and the equipment. Is that correct, chief?
Yes, according to the contract.
Yep. So the gun and the equipment, you'll see a twelve thousand for the uh gun allowance and seventy-seven thousand one hundred for the equipment allowance. But nothing for clothing allowance, because that was um misjournalized. For the office supplies, we're gonna go with ten thousand there. Uh, we had seventy-five hundred of office supplies last year, hardly any this year, but the chief requested ten thousand. Chief, can you explain to us why so?
Yeah, BSNA is uh mixed up again. Uh, it's, we have about sixty-five hundred dollars right now in actual expenditures in office supplies, so I'm gonna try to figure out why, again, that GL is not worked, for whatever the reason, it doesn't charge to that GL when we pay something, so I'm not sure what's going on.
Okay.
We talked about that before.
Right, so yeah, but so we did wanna put ten thousand in, that seems reasonable. For operating supplies, uh, we had sixty-five thousand dollars was requested. Oh, no, I'm sorry, uh, forty thousand dollars requested. Um, there was twenty-seven thousand spent this year. There was twenty-nine thousand six hundred spent last year. Chief, I took it down to thirty. Should I keep it at forty? I mean, it's thirty.
Yeah, you gotta keep that at forty. I'm hiring new people, and I'm gonna need uniforms and and that kind of thing. And and that activity um, that activity is not the right number either, so I'm not sure why.
What, the twenty-seven thousand?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you think it's more or less?
I was more. Yeah. So my budget, at the amended budget to forty-five thousand for twenty-one, twenty-two um is gonna be all used.
Wow.
Not gonna be anything left. So, and in uh twenty-two, twenty-three for the forty thousand, I'm gonna have to watch it like a hawk, to make sure we don't cross that forty thousand number, but I'll get it done.
Watch it like a hawk, Bill. And this building maintenance and supplies, which one was that?
Operating.
Operating supplies?
Operating.
Operating suppliers, I mean, per se, just.
I can drill down on that twenty-seven number.
Uniforms.
Uniforms?
Uniforms, yeah, uniforms, uniforms and vests. Yep.
Right, the gun allowance.
Yes, the twenty-seven. That's the footnote.
Got printer paper, things of that nature, uh, other supplies.
Uniforms, but wouldn't uniforms come out of?
Yes, uniforms for new officers and and.
Got you, okay.
Like, for instance, if a uh police officer gets promoted to sergeant, that you have a different uniform they gotta get, yeah. And 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 then any new hires, as I was saying earlier, it 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 really hurts when you have somebody that shows up for, you just had it happen, and somebody show up for two months and they leave. And and I've spent six or seven thousand dollars on all the uniforms, not included a thousand dollars for vest. Nobody else can wear them. It's got their names on them. It's got, you know, it's personalized to them, and uh.
Nothing that we can do in that regard, anywhere they can take part in it?
Right, if they, if they leave.
I I I've talked with David Jones about that, and and he said that it would have to be something that that uh we had them sign in the beginning, and you know, we're already having a hard enough time getting people to come to work for us. So then you start throwing stuff like that. If you leave, you have to pay for this. If you leave, they're not gonna come to work for that. I mean, it's just, you know, but but again, if we raise the salary to to an acceptable level that's comparable with everybody else, I I I don't think we're gonna have the turnover issue that we're having. I think that that's gonna be eliminated. Obviously, you know, I can't guarantee a hundred percent it'll be eliminated, but I think that it will quash a lot of these people coming and going. They get here, they get an experience here, they they get to see what what policing is about, and and then they got some experience under their bill, and somebody else offers them seven dollars an hour or five dollars an hour more, and they're out the door.
Yep.
There's no retention requirement?
I'm sorry?
There's no retention requirements within your contract?
Oh, ma'am.
Okay, and as far as the uniforms are concerned, you said you have to buy a whole new set of uniforms if somebody's promoted or something? I mean, I know it's been a while since I've been there, but they don't do patches anymore?
Well, uh, yeah, the 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 insignias and and that kind of thing, you know, that doesn't happen that often, but that was just an example that I was saying that, you know, what what that expenditure would be. Uniforms mostly are for uh new personnel. That's usually mostly what that's spent on. So very, very minimal amount of spend on people with promotions or anything like that.
All right.
Okay, and then the next line item is our fuel. Uh, we had sixty-five thousand requested. We've got it in there, sixty-five thousand. Also, last year it was fifty-seven thousand spent. This year about eighty-six. The chief put sixty-five in there, so we're gonna go with that. Building maintenance supplies, chief, you requested thirty-five hundred. This year only nine thirty was spent. Last year, seven ninety-seven. Uh, can you tell us why thirty-five hundred? Because I put it, I took you down to a thousand.
Yeah, well, uh, again, that's, that's an issue where things were spent out of that GL, and somehow they ended up being charged to an, to another GL, and we're not sure how that happened, but uh.
And how long has it been happening for?
Well, that GL, the not, as you see, the the nine hundred and thirty, we use that for like uh cleaning supplies that are not, that are not provided for uh with the contractor clean. We have to deal with biohazards.
Yeah.
So I have to, I have to buy certain chemicals that they spray the animal control truck, for instance, with, and things that they uh, the officers use to to clean the cars and and sanitize and that kind of thing. Um, I'm not comfortable with thirty-five hundred, I mean, with a thousand. I think it needs to be back where I put it, but uh.
I I totally agree, especially with that. Go ahead, Mr. Bibbs. Five thousand? I think thirty-five hundred.
Well, I mean, it, you know, and and everything is increasing.
Right. Okay, five, five thousand.
Then uh.
That's the founder.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bibbs.
Building maintenance supplies?
Yes, ma'am.
Good.
I have a question.
Please, go ahead.
Um, is this the same company that we're in con- that we have a contract with, clean the police department?
Yes, ma'am. Right, but they don't clean police cars.
Not cars. He said he had to buy special cleaning equipment. You had to.
To sanitize the building and and.
But I'm just saying, that was in the contract, because it was something I brought up at the time. They're supposed to pro- provide all the cleaning supplies.
Not for the. Yeah, these are.
Well, I'm not talking about the biohazard. He, is that what this is all for? Everything is bio?
All of it, but a good portion of it is for that type of disinfectant.
Because as I un- I understand we're having problems with that company. And like I said, the contract, because it was one of the questions I brought up at the time, i- and. Oh, okay.
That's what he was just saying to me.
Okay. But I.
Woman Wally has no cap.
I, huh?
You have no cap. That's what my son was like. He was going right off.
No, but I'm just saying, I I, if I don't know, I can't deal with.
That's what he was saying to me when I was starting to ask that question. He was saying, so we, yeah, he's gonna come back.
Well, then you're, when we start this meeting, somebody needs to give me a list of what is and isn't permissible.
Not necessarily.
Okay.
Not saying it's not permissible.
No, because this happened once before. We were talking here, you can't do this here, you can't do it there, you can't do it. Somebody help me out. It's okay. It's okay. The next time you can leave out with the all due respect, that usually leads to no, so.
That's all, Jerome.
All right.
Okay. So now we gotta keep in mind that when the chief says that these uh GLs are not accurate, so they came out of somewhere. So that means one of these other line items have expenses in there that shouldn't be there. So we need to find out if there has been, you know, things coming out of the wrong GL, what GL did it come out of, so we can make those adjustments to those GLs, because when we're looking and we're seeing, you know, I mean, no activity, it's like, okay, there's no activity. So if there is activity, we need to find out where and make adjustments to those accounts, because that's not really helping us with the budget if we don't know what's going on.
Mr. Me?
Please, hence the need to get rid of BSNA.
There you go, Mayor Pro Tim.
I don't know, we we've having all these problems all of a sudden with BSNA. I'm not sure, because usually they was, they was pretty good, but I'm not sure.
That's because nobody was talking about it, Mayor Pro Tim.
Okay, um, now, I do have a question on the animal license.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, are you collecting that fee? Because we don't show any revenue for animal license.
That, for for whatever the reason, that that revenue, let me see where that is, hold on.
Well, you and we in expenditures now, but when you go into revenues, we didn't.
Right, that was a question we have for them.
Right, we didn't see see any, any dog licenses.
So I'm not sure. I can't answer the question as to how many. So I'm not sure, I can't answer the question as to how many we, how many animals we've registered this year. Uh but the records bureau collects them. The records bureau and the the over at the animal, the animal control officer works out of the records bureau. And that counter collects the revenues for the uh animal licenses, and then they're brought over. I need to find out what GL that that he's making those deposits or that that uh Ms. Murphy is making those deposits. I believe they're going into uh miscellaneous revenue, that's where I think, that's where I think the mix up is, and we need to correct that.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
Cuz I don't know, we was talking, maybe moving that back over to clerk's office?
Why did we move it in the first place, Chief, you remember? Why we moved it from the clerk's office over to Europe?
Uh because the animal control officer didn't have, well, let let me just say. Previously, but prior to this clerk, it was very difficult to find out what animal was registered and what wasn't. And and so to have the animal control officer on the same page as everybody else, they wanted to be able to see. Who was registered, they registered the dogs and they handled it, so now the animal control officer is is familiar with the dog. They've issued the tag, they know the owners, that kinda thing, it just kinda, it I I think it was streamlined, I think it improved things, and I don't think we should change it. But uh we'll get this straight, and this is the only hiccup that I've seen in it so far, I think the police department is the right place for that.
Please, go ahead, Con.
Someone say too, like at our last meeting, um when Mayor Proton brought it up, that if it was like a half hour thing and animal control or the police. Picked up the animal, they couldn't get in touch with anybody to find the records.
Yeah, sure, that's what it was too, yeah, good point. So having it there, PD, it is what it is, I agree.
Alright.
Okay, picking up with um equipment maintenance supplies. Got seventy five hundred in there for requested and recommended. Uh the professional consultant, six hundred and eighty thousand was requested, six hundred and eighty one was spent last year.
Yes. Uh it. If you look at that, um there was additional expenditures made out of that, as we talked about just last week. It was a twenty thousand dollars budgeted for. The implementation of a live scan machine for the police department booking area that was required by our records management system, Clemis. They required us to purchase this new machine to be online with everybody else, this new machine was delivered in September. And uh. Ended up only being sixteen thousand as opposed to the twenty thousand that was put in there last year. Uh this year, because of the financial situation that we're in, I'm not looking to make any other. Special expenditures out of there other than what we need to, which is dispatch and and uh. Uh. Records management, Clemis, and uh there's a three point five anticipated increase for Clemis. And uh mandatory IT upgrade for for a couple of the IT computer systems. And that would take us to about six hundred and seventy thousand, so I think we should put that at six seventy, so instead of six eighty.
Question, Con, woman worst.
I I can't hear, I'm sorry. I couldn't hear you. Professional consultant is uh Dearborn Dispatch, the unified dispatch center that we use for police and fire. And uh. Uh how the whole thing comes out of my budget, I don't know, but uh it's police and fire and uh.
Say that one more time.
Yeah, police and fire, I'm not sure how that comes out of my budget, uh. Reporting operation system costs for the Clemis system that the officers use, the computer system that holds all the police records and police reports.
Maybe because it's nine one one though, Chief.
I'm sorry?
Maybe because it's nine one one, that's why it comes all out of Europe.
But we both use nine one one.
Yeah, I'm just saying. Yeah, I was just like.
I don't know. I have a question, I don't. Go ahead. I don't know if anybody could actually answer this, but I know when you look at telephone bill, whether it's cellphone or home phone, there's a nine one one surcharge on that, that where charges the.
That's in the revenues uh on this budget.
Okay, so, okay, so that kinda offsets what we pay out to dispatch a little bit, not.
Not really, not 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 tremendously, no, uh it's very, very minimal, to tell you the truth.
I know it's a small surcharge, but I was just wondering how they charge both of us.
Yeah.
For the municipality and the consumer.
Yeah, it's unreal.
Okay, Mr. Green.
Okay, okay, alright, um uh for the next animal control. Uh the chief requested thirty five thousand, uh there was only fifteen thou- fourteen thousand, well, almost fifteen thousand of activity this year. There was eleven thousand five hundred activity last year, I shaved him down all the way to fifteen thousand, chief.
Yeah, that ain't gonna fly. Yeah, I'm gonna tell you why. Um Romulus, we have a contract with Romulus and uh we have to pay per animal. And uh. Um. Oh, yeah. That uh at thirty five thousand. Uh I probably could live with uh, I probably could live with twenty five thousand. But we don't wanna go below that, because their numbers are going up, everything is increasing, their numbers are going up, I've already been told by them that they're gonna be increasing their numbers, so.
So we're gonna put twenty five.
Five if you pick up the vocals, too.
Right. Alright, I'm with you. Let's do it, do we get a yes vote? Do we get a yes vote on the money?
You're right.
I I will do thirty five if you get them broken.
Please.
Okay.
See, now that's something there, we can start a business, we could make beaucoup money if we had somebody who would pick up the goat.
That's true.
Let's let's open the start net.
I don't know, patrol.
Yeah. There you go. Everybody complains about it, I bet you they pay, and when you look at credit control and how much they charge. And stuff like that, y'all get on that.
You gonna talk, you gonna make a dog rich.
Seriously.
You gonna make a dog rich, that's a good one, sure.
Have to be, and.
It's out here for real. Great, little symbol of your house.
Well, let them let, let them dig out your foundation.
She'll even drive a truck.
Yep, I drive a truck. Well, I I want a twelve thousand dollar ring.
Oh, God. Go ahead, go ahead.
Alright, and then the next line item we have is prisoner maintenance, where there was forty thousand this year activity, forty eight thousand last year. Chief requested ninety thousand. I shaved it down to fifty, chief, what you guys say?
Yeah, you can't do that.
You shaved it to what?
Fifty.
And he asked for ninety?
Yeah.
Are you not gonna feed them now, but?
No, I just, I mean.
I'm getting, I'm getting wacky, I gotta go.
Really, it's true, you can't cut that, right?
Because the courts haven't been open, and so we've had less prisoners in jail. The courts are opening at this point, and the prisoners are starting to increase, I, yeah, I.
I mean, you just gotta tell me something, or I'm cutting.
That's right, I know, I know, that's why we sitting here. Oh, boy, I like the parking lot.
What did you take it to?
Uh fifty.
So wait, we going up or down?
Like ninety or what?
You only spent forty this year.
So far.
Sorry, you gotta go to ninety.
Okay.
Yeah, and then the other thing, and let me, let me make this point, uh because this goes to what the Mayor Proton talked about. Very important for us to remember that we have until August thirtieth. For invoices for the previous fiscal year to come in. So just because you see this activity here, it doesn't look like we spent it. We get, we get billed in July and August for things that happen in May and June.
It's true.
So we have to pay those out of that previous fiscal year. So what happens in BSNA is all of a sudden I have two sets of GLs that I'm dealing with. I'm dealing with the previous year, I gotta go up and and take money out of that to pay this bill. And then I got a new bill for this year, so then I gotta go down and go through all those new purchase orders and and go for this year. So we have to bear that in mind as we go through this, it's absolutely perfect point that you said earlier, that that's important that we realize that. So what what may show is forty eight thousand last year and may show us forty one thousand. Now, when I start getting the bills from the county, because the prisoners have already increased, would you all say that the prisoners have increased so far? Prisoners are increasing, they're bringing more prisoners out in here uh for court, out of court. It it's gonna uh, it's gonna increase, so I don't, yeah, I think, I I could live with eighty. Yep. But I don't wanna go any lower than that, because then we're gonna come back for an amendment.
Alright, let's do eighty, I wanna wanna do true numbers to the best where I've done.
Okay.
Right, we ain't gonna be able to.
Alright, well, we are officially back in the red with that move. Yep, with with that move.
I mean, I have to hold off on this, but we do have our money to pay that state.
That's the three hundred thousand.
Right, so it was like three hundred and sixty thousand, we do have that appropriated, because we have to pay a loan back this year, right, or is it next?
This year, you got it, somebody?
Yeah, we are, we, that's all this year's activity, I'm talking about next year's stuff.
He got it up next year too, he got it every year, the next ten years, but we're asking for forgiveness for that. So, believe me, we, you know, everybody knows that the leader of the house is gonna be here Friday at eight thirty. Come by, tell him, shake his hand, tell him, it'll be open to you all. Tell, 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 I mean, I mean, exactly, you know that we need to at least add a forgiveness on this one, cuz I've asked for forgiveness on this one, you know? I mean, it's three, three million, but that's three hundred thousand, and go back to our general fund. That was where I bounce, so that's something that they're looking at.
Okay, so community policing, we got fifteen thousand in there, recommended and requested.
Well, I got some good news with that, so I don't know what you, what you cut it down to this time.
I didn't, I didn't cut that one, chief.
Oh, okay. Um.
Fifteen thousand, how much more can you cut it?
Huh?
Go ahead.
We can cut that to ten.
I'm gonna say you can cut that to five. Did your community night out and all that other stuff?
Yeah, that that's all the supplies and and the stuff we use for national night out for. Uh all of the big events that we have for the for the people in the community, the the movie nights, national night out, shop with the cops, all kinds of stuff.
People love all that stuff, yeah, gotta have to do that. Yeah, they do a really good job.
I'm just gonna put some pressure on some some of our community stakeholders to come to the table and help us with it, that's all, I'm gonna go out and get some money.
Good.
Okay, K nine unit, you had five thousand requested, I I took that down to zero, there was no activity last year or this year.
Okay, which brings me to a point, I'm glad you brought that up, uh so so K nine unit is, that that's a, an expenditure of. There is no expenditure there, but there is a revenue GL there, which is donations, K nine unit donations. So we began a few years ago collecting donations under the previous chief, uh. And they had twelve or fourteen thousand dollars in there, and now all of a sudden, we don't know where that money went. Um it didn't carry over the next year, the next year, the next year, so nobody knows what happened to it. But uh so that was to put in place a K nine unit to pay for a dog and the training for the handler and to outfit a police car. To be able to handle the dog, because we don't have a K nine unit at this point. Uh it is one of my goals to get a K nine officer here, so we don't have to keep utilizing other cities for their canines. Every time we need to track somebody or every time we have a missing child, or every time we have a need for somebody to be tracked. Uh I, I have to call another city and we're we're taking a lot of time, so that was, that was something that was pretty important. And uh. The treasurer has indicated that we would try to track that back and see with Plant Moran, what what happened with that funding, where it went, because it was never spent. And it just disappeared, so and and so we need to find out where that went, but. So as far as expenditures. Uh I don't expect this year to have any expenditures out of that, so I'm fine with it being zero. But I wanna put it on your radar, because there are some people that are interested in donating to us. And if I can get that through, I would hope to have your support if I can get it donated.
Go ahead, please.
Oh, man, it's part of our mutual aid agreement with all the areas in in the region.
Oh, yeah, sure, mutual aid.
You know, Mr. Pip, now, you know.
Yes, ma'am.
Alright.
Oh, oh, okay.
Alright.
Thanks.
So the next one is community, community policing academy events. There was ten thousand spent last year, I mean, this year, the chief requested twenty five thousand, I took it down to ten thousand.
We put that back up to twenty five thousand, cuz that's donations, that's that's money that's donated to us in the revenue side of that same GL. Community policing events, and I need to have someplace to. To facilitate the donations, if if uh somebody gives us ten thousand dollars for something, I need to be able to put it in the. Uh city's account and get it back out to pay the bills.
So the activity of last year, you had twenty five thousand.
Yeah, that's all, that was all donated.
So the um. So you're saying.
So that was the cost.
Get it.
I'm sorry.
Okay, so the donations for com- uh community police academy is twenty five, so you want the event to be twenty, got it, the expenditure to be twenty five?
Yes.
Makes sense. Yep.
Okay.
Almost done.
It's a wash there, that's donations.
Okay.
So why are we doing this?
Right? And then the next one was the um building maintenance, which six hundred and fifty two dollars was spent this year. Twenty six hundred last year, the chief requested thirty five hundred. Leaving that at thirty five hundred, chief, you need that whole thirty five?
Well, given, yeah, we've we've got some serious issues, we need to fix up the facility and and the uh DPS director has. Uh agreed to work with me on some of it, but we have a a major roof leak, as you're aware. Uh and and that's caused some interior damage to carpet and and the ceiling tiles and things like that, so there are some things that we're gonna have to pay for out of that. And I think that that's a low number, but, you know, we we gotta, we gotta be able to. We gotta be able to do something with it.
Okay, and equipment maintenance, we got sixty thousand in there, we kept that.
Yes.
Uh vehicle maintenance and repair, chief, do we need that expense still, or because we have the the fleet management deal, are we still gonna have that expenditure?
We are.
Okay, so.
What you think that's gonna be, though?
Seventy thousand.
With the old vehicle? So when you getting rid of those old vehicles to get the new ones in?
Right, but that's what we're trying to get to, to where we don't have it expensed, I know we cut it.
You you, I mean, yeah, for sure, no doubt, I get it. I know you do have some still old stuff in the fleet, at the same time, I just wanna know when we gonna get it out.
And that's all the not, that's all the essential, essential workers.
Right. And we working on that with the what's name, you already, me and chief already on that as relates to take home vehicles and all that stuff.
Yeah.
We be getting that to you guys.
Yeah. How does that impact?
Right. Right. Okay, ma'am.
How does this impact, didn't we just do something with fleet management or something?
Right, well, we eliminated a hundred and eighty thousand. We did that last year, coming into this year, we still need money to take care of some of the old stuff that's left, cuz we still have old stuff in the fleet. While we got the new stuff in, but we've eliminated a hundred and eighty thousand over the last year, so in maintenance, vehicle maintenance costs. Overall, that's what the enterprise.
They didn't take over everything, no?
We didn't do, we didn't do everything at one time.
Okay.
We working at it, we getting there.
Okay, we got three thousand in for subscriptions and memberships, three thousand, subscriptions and memberships, three thousand. And then for uh uh M Coles expenditures. Got three thousand for that. Now, chief, we didn't have any activity last year or this year, but you got three thousand in there, can you help us with that?
Well, yeah, that, M Coles is the the Michigan Commission on Law Enforcement Standards, and they offer. Uh reimbursement for training up to a certain point, and uh last year. Uh it was very minimal. Um. Activity this year hasn't been turned in yet, because they didn't release the numbers of how much we could spend until just read. Um, activity this year hasn't been turned in yet, because they did release the numbers of how much we could spend until just re- how much they would reimburse it for until just recently. So that, that will, the training invoices, we could charge to that will go in soon, so. That's reimbursable, it's only three grand, so, uh, that's what they give us and that's what we spend.
Okay.
It's a war.
Okay, education and training, we got twenty thousand in there, that's what was requested. It was fourteen thousand eight hundred spent this year, fourteen thousand spent last year, so twenty thousand is about reasonable. The next line item is the vehicles, which was sixty two thousand, but we don't have to worry about that, right?
Well, let me back up to the, let's, back up to education and training, did you, did you move it down?
No, I didn't, I did, I left it at twenty thousand.
So what we're going to do with that one is take that down to fifteen thousand. One of the things that we've, we've worked on doing over the last year or so is, is getting our own people certified to become instructors. So we'll have to send people to a lot of the training, we can have our own people do the instruction, that's one thing. The second thing is we uh, we went to a thing called Virtual Academy, which is uh. Is a, just what it is, Virtual Academy, it's a computer-based program where officers have to take their training setting at a computer, they watch the videos, they go through the testing, they have to log in every so often. Uh, that um satisfies many of our required train requirements and training for M Coles, which will allow me to uh. Move the budget down a little bit. Also, uh, it should be noted that uh, what Councilman Watley alluded to earlier is related to the uh. Public safety training and retention and recruitment grant uh for ninety one thousand dollars, that was a grant that uh. Is almost passed up by the city. Um, we didn't uh. We got notification of it late and actually the treasurer called me and said. Uh, I sent this over to the, to, to the chief's office uh in December and it's due today at five. And I haven't received it, I think, what are you guys doing with it? So I looked at it, I called the mayor, I said, look, we gotta apply for, for this grant, I'm gonna work on it. This is what I wanna do with it. The mayor said, it sounds great to me, let's see if we can do it, and I did it, and I did it because of something that you said, Councilman Watley, you, you alluded uh, a while back. About the need for officer wellness and, and a program for officer wellness, so that was one of the things that I thought of.
You said it with me?
Yeah.
No, I'm.
Yep, we were uh in a closed session and you talked to me about it and uh. So we got awarded that grant, and that grant is also gonna allow me uh three of the major training seminars and, and classes for the officers. That, that our goal was to implement and uh, uh, so that grant will cover that, that grant will cover um. Uh, the construction, well, there's already a room, so I don't wanna say construction, but we'll, we'll cover the equipment. Of a police gym in the police station, that was supposed to be a gym when the building was built, it was never put in place. Uh, so we're gonna cover that and uh, uh, the police mini-station on Middleville. Uh, it's gonna cover the construction, the, the remodeling of that facility and turning it into a training center. So officers have someplace to go and also the housing officer and community relations officer will be based out of there in the neighborhood. So. And it's a no match grant.
Awesome, alright.
Okay, and so, chief, with that monies, is that ne- that's gonna be next fiscal year that you're getting that ninety one?
Uh, well, it depends on when they send it to me, but uh. My conversation with the uh treasurer's office indicated that we, I would have the official award letter this week. And depending on how fast we moved on things, uh, you know, I don't want, I don't want to spring it on you and start asking for reimbursements of things until we. Get through the budget, so probably uh next fiscal year, July, yeah.
Okay, alright, so, I mean, that's kinda important though, because if that's money that we're gonna get for the next fiscal year, then that'll help our bottom line for the next fiscal year. Those expenditures that you're talking about covering, are they already in the budget? Or not?
No, because he didn't know we were getting the grant till just the other day.
Okay, well, cancel that. Um, okay, so let's move on to the next one, we have um for what, uh, non-salary fringe expenditures. There was sixty three thousand six hundred and forty five dollars spent on that for F D C B T. And you don't have anything budgeted for that, correct?
Uh, yeah, that's something that Plant Moran normally handles as it relates to the uh. calculation of what that's going to be.
Okay.
Um, we only have one, I think at this time, we only have one police person uh on the uh F D C B T or one police employee. And it is the evidence technician, and I think that phases out next year, so.
Okay, that's probably why they don't have it in there, okay, and then equipments, you don't have anything budgeted for that?
No.
Alright, uh, for police equipment, the J J A G grant?
Yeah, Justice Assistance Grant.
Right, you had forty thousand in there, I took it down to twenty one to match the, the revenues that come in, that's coming in from that grant.
Okay, but that, that's uh.
The revenue is up there at twenty one.
Yeah, revenue was at twenty one, but it, it should, it should be forty, because uh, we found out that there was some. Money left on the table from previous years that we have to spend by September, so there's gonna be forty coming in.
We'll change both of them, change the revenue to forty and expenditure to forty?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they just announced the twenty twenty one, which gave me additional funding.
Hey, so the revenues for the uh J A G grant for police is gonna be changed to uh forty, you said forty thousand?
Yes.
Forty thousand. Alright, and then I think we only got one more line item, I believe.
Yep.
Uh, yep, and that's gonna be the lease payments. Now, lease payments, we didn't have any this year, you got one hundred thousand in there for next year for lease payments.
Mr. Bivens, we did have one in there this year, uh, the lease payments for the. Uh, two Durango's and the charger that we purchased, it's fifty one thousand dollars a year, we paid that in twenty twenty one, purchase them. And then in uh twenty twenty two, we still owe this one and next year, right? So I don't know, I don't know where they pulled that from, I don't know, I didn't have anything to do with that, where, where they paid it from last year. But this year, it needs to come out of our budget, it, it, I mean, it came out of our budget last year, but I don't know where.
Okay, so you sold twenty one, twenty twenty one, it was fifty one thousand of lease payments paid, twenty one, twenty two, there was no lease payments paid.
So you missed the payment.
Well, that's what I'm. Seeing here in B S N.
Paid it.
You said you haven't paid, so who's, who's making that payment, who knows anything about it?
That, that, yeah, well, that.
Okay, is it, has it been paid? Oh, well, then it wouldn't be me, because it would be in B S N A.
Is it a bill that comes in?
Well, it's for a motor company, but it should go to the treasurer's office, yeah, for, for credit.
I think that's going to pass.
Like, you know, let, 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 let's just, let's, let's, I mean, and the clerk, the clerk can attest to this, everything that comes in the mail, it'll go to the treasurer's office. We dealing with a issue, we dealing with a issue right now, but we received, how many checks is it? How many?
I'm melting them.
Okay. Yeah, checks that were in the drawer, in the clerk's office from last year. Yeah, we're doing with that right now. Yeah.
Were they money owed to us or we didn't have?
Yeah, good thing it's money owed to us that we didn't cash.
Okay, just so. So fifty one thousand?
Yeah, yes, yes, three-year leases, fifty one thousand six thirteen each year.
So we can take that down then to a hundred thousand?
But no, because the additional fifty thousand goes to the enterprise lease agreement. For the lease of all of our police cars. Like, city council approved a hundred thousand dollars for vehicles, period, last year, and it was split between the two. One with, one half of it went to the lease payments of the cars that we purchased before enterprise came along. Council uh hurried up and approved those, so we had cars right away, and then the rest of it went towards the lease payment for the enterprise.
Fifty thousand.
And we have to do that every year at this point, uh, until we get these paid off. So this is the second year, we got one more year after that and it'll drop down to fifty thousand um, a year on, on the enterprise plan. So it's the same thing, it's always the same thing, it's next, it's this year's budget the same as last year's.
So have we talked, I mean, outside the first uh.
Three cars.
You get any more?
Yeah, yeah, we have uh seven cars right now, or eight cars right now that we got from enterprise, enterprise. So we're, we're, remember how long it took to get them outfitted? Well, it's taking that much and more now because of everything, uh, just as he said, something about the water meters, we found out that, that the uh. Bush bumpers and other equipment comes from overseas and it's, everybody's behind weeks and weeks and weeks, but yeah, we have the cars, we got three brand new cars, seven are a lot right now waiting to be outfitted. Um, and, and uh, one, two.
I mean, we get, the system's all in, every year we're gonna be getting.
Yep, once we get to the desired number of cars.
Then we get those old cars out and the maintenance car goes away completely, because we cut the maintenance cost in half right now. It goes to enterprise, so it's. So it's our payment, so you know, it's like you turn in a new car, I mean, traded in to get a new car.
How long do you guys keep it out?
What is it, two years now? Almost two years now, that way you keep the maintenance cost down, enterprise.
Well, this is mad, what is going to happen? They get to say next year, okay, no, I'm gonna be out twenty twenty four.
Uh huh, we always standing ahead of the game, go ahead, Councilman Watson.
So, the, so you have a beautiful, my item, the win game is, we have a beautiful maintenance repair. So, beautiful maintenance repair is from the line item from here, for, in the win state.
Yeah, because if you guys remember this, i- in the police department alone, it was like a hundred and eighty for maintenance. A vehicle, like two years ago when we was going through the budget. Okay. It's, it's seventy. Yep. Okay, alright, motion for dismissal?
So I'm moving, Mr. Chair. All the favors say.
All who want to stay Satan big. Long meeting, but a good meeting.